Good evening, everyone. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular virtual board meeting this evening that all can participate in remotely. You may join via Zoom. Specific directions on how to participate are located on the Board of Education webpage on the district's website, NVUSD.org/Board. The open session part of the meeting agenda will begin at 7:00 PM. Before going into closed session, the board is available for public comment on closed session agenda items. Mr. Michaels, is there any public comment on closed session items?
There is no public comment on closed session items.
Thank you. Seeing that there are none, the Napa Valley Unified School District will now adjourn into closed session. Thank you. See you at 7:00. Good evening. My name is Robyn Jankowicz, and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight that all can participate remotely. You may join via Zoom. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. To access interpretation from a computer, click on the interpretation icon on the bottom of your screen from within this application. On a mobile device, click on the More button on the bottom of your screen and choose Language Interpretation from within the Zoom application. This is a separate channel that will allow you to hear English to Spanish translation concurrently. Please note, interpretation services are not available when you join our meeting by calling in. Our interpreters for tonight's meeting are Paul Huertas and Julie Young. May we have one of the interpreters translate these directions on our English channel so our Spanish-speaking families can hear the instructions.
Buenas noches. La Mesa Directiva del Distrito Escolar del Valle de Napa tiene una reunión especial esta noche. Estamos ofreciendo servicios de interpretación. Los que están siguiendo esta reunión a través de la computadora pueden acceder al servicio de interpretación. En la parte baja de su pantalla van a ver un icono que dice interpretación. Ustedes lo van a apretar y escogen el idioma. Si están llamando desde un teléfono celular, este servicio está disponible apretando la tecla con el signo de más. Este servicio no se encuentra disponible si usted está llamando desde un teléfono de línea fija. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. Specific instructions on how to participate in the meeting are located on the Board of Education webpage on the district's website, NVUSD.org/Board. May we please start with an attendance roll call from Vera Morales, Executive Assistant.
Yes, student board member bid?
Present.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Present.
Trustee Gracia?
Present.
Trustee Water?
Present.
Trustee Ricer?
Present.
Trustee Gonzales Marias?
Present.
Trustee Shu?
Present.
Trustee Dooley?
Here.
Coram, present. Thank you.
Thank you, Vera. Thank you for joining us tonight for our Napa Valley Unified School District Board meeting. Public participation remains virtual online only. This meeting tonight is in accordance with the open meeting rules in the State Assembly, the State of California per Assembly Bill 361. Please note, we will go hybrid on March 17th. We look forward to hearing you and seeing you. I'm going to start tonight with some basic instructions on how we are going to be using Zoom and involve the members of the community. All Board of Education trustees and the superintendent are on video throughout the entire board meeting from here in the boardroom. Other staff members are present by video. Members of the community will not be on video and will be muted except during public comment. During public comment, any member of the community that wishes to speak must raise their hand using the Raise Hand feature in Zoom. You will be unmuted and will be provided three minutes to speak. Instructions on how to raise your hand are available on the district website at NVUSD.org/Board. Trustee Water, do we have a report from closed session?
Yes, we do. Let's see, D1 Student Discipline. D1A Expulsions. D1A1, the board recommends for the continuance of extension of hearing for potential student expulsion for student 12092021C.
Move to approve?
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Dooley. Vera, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Ricer?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzales Marias?
Aye.
Trustee Shu?
Aye.
Trustee Dooley?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vera.
Also, D1A2, the board recommends for the expulsion of student 3032022A.
Move to approve?
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Dooley. Vera, roll call vote, please?
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Ricer?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzales Marias?
Aye.
Trustee Shu?
Aye.
Trustee Dooley?
Aye.
Thank you.
And finally, D1B1, the board recommends for the readmission after expulsion for student 01162020E.
Move to approve?
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Dooley, and Vera, one last roll call vote, please?
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Ricer?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzales Marias?
Aye.
Trustee Shu?
Aye.
Trustee Dooley?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vera. We are now going to have Dr. Musetti lead us in our flag salute.
My pleasure.
My pleasure, Legion. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is live streamed and recorded via Zoom and will be archived on the district YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced and located on the district webpage at NVUSD.org. The public can join the virtual board meeting remotely via Zoom. Participation instructions and the process for public comment can be found on the district webpage. May I please get a motion for approval of agenda?
Move to approve?
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Chu. All in favor?
Aye.
And approved. Approval of the minutes, February 10th, 2022.
Move to approve?
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Dooley. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes approved. And Dr. Musetti, do you see any distinguished guests in our audience this evening?
I do. I see President Gail Young from NVA is here, but she is requested. She'll be speaking during an item later in the agenda. So, welcome and thank you for being here. We look forward to hearing you later. And then, Ms. Leslie Walder, I do not see her. Or did you promote her already, Mr. Michaels?
I did not see her join either.
Okay. Yep, we just seen Ms. Gail Young attending here tonight.
Okay, well, welcome, Gail. Now, one of our favorite parts of the evening. Tonight, we are celebrating students from New Technology High School and Napa High School. Just a quick reminder that recognition of Students of the Month is generously sponsored by Napa Valley Education Foundation. Principal Miller, would you like to start us off?
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, President Jankowicz, Board of Education trustees, Superintendent Musetti, and community members. I'm very happy to be here tonight and have the opportunity to recognize New Tech High Students of the Month for January and February. So, our Student of the Month for January is Quinn Salin-Frend. And Quinn is not able to be here this evening, but he did express his gratitude for the recognition. So, I still want to say a little bit about him, because he'll be watching this later with his family. Quinn's teachers describe him as very hardworking and very determined. Our internship coordinator, Ms. Molinarie, says Quinn is thoughtful. He cares deeply about the community, and he chose to complete his internship at the Napa Valley Wildlife Rescue Center. We even have some great action shots of him splinting a pigeon's wing. So, he had a really wonderful hands-on experience there. His digital media teacher, Mrs. Gottfried, says that Quinn is a leader in his graphic design class. He's always excited to learn. He plans to pursue a career in wildlife biology either at UC San Diego or UC Santa Barbara. And the staff and I are very proud of Quinn and look forward to hearing about the great things he does in the future. So, with us this evening is our Student of the Month for February, Senior Janelle Portillo. Janelle is a leader, for sure, on the New Tech High campus, and she's been involved with so many different aspects of our school. She's been a part of middle school recruitment. She's a part of our leadership class. She serves on the Student Advisory Council, and she serves as a virtual student panelist when we work with other schools who are interested in project-based learning. Actually, just yesterday, Janelle was part of a panel talking to some teachers and school leaders from Ohio on Zoom, of course, about her experiences in high school. And she shared with them the impact New Tech High had had on her educational journey. I've loved, loved watching Janelle grow since her freshman year. I've just seen her confidence deepen. I've seen her goals for the future clarify. I see her take ownership for what she wants in her life and to work really hard and with a lot of purpose to accomplish what she sets out to do. The staff and I are very, very proud of Janelle, and I'm very excited to introduce you to her. So, Janelle, go ahead.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Janelle Portillo. I am a senior at New Technology High School. To talk a little bit about myself, education overall has been a learning step, as how I would say it, especially as a young kid. I've been in the NVUSD district since I was a kid, and I have always gone through all the little phases in my school life where I choose to be more of a follower than a leader. I was a very shy, very quiet girl growing up, so I didn't have as much confidence in myself. But over the years, as I've gone to more of a project-based learning school like New Tech and also River, it has helped me actually a lot in my communication skills as well as be a little bit more part in my community and just always making sure I can help others. That is also another reason why I just enjoy helping out my school is because I want other incoming students to really enjoy the time they had at school like I did. For example, my freshman year, I did not hang out with the best crowd. I was not the best, but I always made sure to have all my grades in check, always be able to help support my teammates and group. Even if I was not the best at school, I still tried my best 100% because I knew my hard work was going to pay off one day. And Ms. Miller has helped me out since my freshman year. We used to tussle so many times back in my freshman year where we would constantly just not get along. But over the years, she has honestly helped me so much to grow to where I want to be at one point. As of right now, I have applied to six colleges, and I also have some volunteer. I am a tasting room attendee at Alpha Omega Collective. So, my school has really helped me and overall has helped me build time management skills, be able to go ahead and be involved with my school and my community while still being able to go ahead and work and go ahead and do school. For my goals later on in life, I would like to be a lawyer. To go into more in that, I'm more of a criminal justice lawyer. I plan to go ahead and go to San Diego State, as it is my dream school. And I really, really do want to be a lawyer as I'm the type of person who always is going to be a helping hand to anybody in the need, even if it's a stranger, even if it's a close friend, close family, a teacher. I will always be there to help out, and that's why I chose to be a lawyer, because I want to go ahead and help those who are going through the toughest time of their life. Some actually go through, some people go through a lot, and others just need a quick help, a little bit of help. But it's that small impact that I would have on that person for go ahead and helping them out. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Janelle. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. And Principal Ainsworth, are you with us?
I am. So, tonight, we get to celebrate two really amazing women that we're thrilled to present and represent again, some of the best that Napa has to offer. First up for January is Hemina Alvarez Parra. You know her well. She's a student representative to the Board of Trustees as an alternate. She works with Teens Connect extensively. She's one of the key leaders of Bring Change to Mind. She's an Honors and AP student. She carries a 4.28 cumulative GPA. And most importantly, to her identity is being a part of the avid family, which a bunch of them are here tonight to celebrate along with Hemina. I think what you're going to hear from her is just a well-thoughtful student. But most importantly, both students tonight, when I was meeting with them, they stressed extensively that they do not want me to talk about the colleges they're applying to because they don't want to make it about their accomplishments, that they've loved giving back and being of service. So, I'm going to let them talk about that. So, go ahead, Hemina.
Good evening, Dr. Musetti, fellow board members and attendees. It's an honor to be here today, and thank you to Dr. Ainsworth for the recognition. First and foremost, I'd like to thank my mom and sister for their endless support and encouragement. Who I am today is a result of the values of perseverance, optimism, and resiliency that they have both taught me. I think the world of them both, and this award is just as much theirs as it is mine. I'd also like to thank my avid teacher, Mr. King, for the nomination and who has been a major asset to my success. You've taught me what it's like to not only be a good student, but a great one, and I will carry that advice into all sectors of my life. My educational journey in the Napa Valley Unified School District began in the fourth grade at Brown's Valley Elementary after my mom and I had just moved from Roner Park to Napa. My parents had just divorced. My mom began raising me as a single mother, and I was learning how to navigate my quickly changing life at the age of nine. School was one of the things that I found security in. I enjoyed learning new things, challenging myself, and feeling proud of earning good grades. These skills continue to help me in my journey at Harvest Middle School and Napa High. I've found success in many honors and AP classes such as AP Language and Composition and honors French. However, my proudest success lies with my passion for mental health advocacy. At Napa High, I've taken the role as co-president for our school's Bring Change to Mind Club. This club has opened many doors for me, such as presenting our club at today's board meeting. I'm also president of the Teens Connecting Council, which is partnered with Napa's oldest nonprofit, Mentis. Both roles have taught me how to be a kind, intentional, and empathetic leader. With my passion for helping others, history, and literature, I hope to major in political science at UC or private university in California and to continue my involvement with mental health advocacy. As my high school career reaches its near end, I look forward to events such as prom, graduation, and leaving a positive legacy within the Napa community. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And I want to extend a congratulations to you. And do we have a second student to celebrate?
We do. For the month of February, we're celebrating Anna Laura Pizano Guzman. She was nominated by Mrs. Profit, her English teacher and key club sponsor. Anna Laura is also a member of Bring Change to Mind. She's the key club president and works extensively through various volunteer efforts, both on campus and away from campus. She's a member of the Color Guard team, a member of the Track and Field team. She carries a 4.48 GPA. And like I shared earlier, she is also a big part of our avid family. So, Anna Laura, go ahead.
Okay. It is my pleasure to introduce myself to the school board and express my gratitude for this recognition. My name is Anna Laura Pizano, and my story begins at the origin of my educational career. Long before being a student at Napa High, I was an elementary student at Phillips and a middle schooler at Silverado. Reflecting back, there has not been a single year that has not been enriching to my education and perseverance as I continue to aim for long-term success. As an avid student and as a soon-to-be first-generation college student, I acknowledge that my parents, my brother, and my avid family have enabled me to maintain confidence, embrace rigor, and strive for excellence. For their endless support, I thank them. It has been the encouragement of my peers and the guidance of my avid teacher, Mrs. Calderon, and my counselor, Mrs. Andrilla, that I have managed to establish my presence on campus and in the community. With great ambition, I have successfully loaded my transcript with many AP honors and dual enrollment courses. I grow enthusiastic for undergoing academic challenges, especially when it comes to calculus and AP chemistry. And I'm thankful for the opportunities I have gotten to empower others through the clubs I am involved in, such as Bring Change to Mind and CSF. Apart from belonging to the Color Guard team, I help lead Napa High Key Club as a president and am fortunate to be involved in serving my community. To our advisor, Ms. Profit, I give thanks for the loads of advice and guidance. I'm also involved on the Napa High School Track and Field Team as a thrower and have grown to appreciate the level of commitment and grit it has taught me. Very proudly, I say I have received acceptances from some colleges, though I still wait for more. With a passion for the sciences and mathematics, I have applied as a biochemistry major and am very anxiously awaiting decisions from UCs and am hoping for admission to University of California of Santa Barbara. As I look forward to what my undergraduate studies entail, financial aid may be the only obstacle I face, given that Napa High and the valuable individuals it contains have equipped me to evolve in the college setting and take the initiative to pursue medical school so that in the near future, I can become a physician. Thank you so much for your time and your dedication.
Thank you, Anna Laura.
Much congratulations to our deserving students. Members of the audience may address the board on any school-related matter that is not on the agenda. The board will not take action on any issue raised during the section of the agenda inasmuch as board action is limited to posted agenda items. Speakers are requested to limit their comments to a maximum of three minutes. Trustee Water, do we have any public comment on non-agenda items received via email at publiccomment@nvusd.org?
We do not.
Thank you very much. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on non-agenda items?
Yes, we do. First speaker is Jacqueline. Go ahead, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Certainly, Jacqueline, thank you.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to request that the hot topic items be moved to the beginning of the agenda. There have been many hot topic items that have not been addressed until well after midnight. And unfortunately, I feel like the board has proven time and time again that you know that there are hot topic items because you're repeatedly asked how many callers you have on the line prior to the discussion, and then you limit our time to speak. So, I just really, I think it's important that when we're addressing things, especially regarding our children's health and well-being, that they are kind of towards the beginning of the agenda so that everyone gets a chance to speak if they want to. I would also just like to add that I recently signed a petition to ask to add a mask resolution to the agenda, and I would like the board to address that as soon as possible. Thanks.
Thank you. Next comment?
Yes, next comment is Sylvia Regalado Zachlaud. Go ahead, please.
Good evening, trustees, superintendent Musetti, and community members. My name is Sylvia Regalado Zachlaud. I'm a current parent at Canyon Oaks Elementary and American Canyon Middle Schools. I have brief comments and requests to share with you this evening. As a parent of elementary-age students, I want to acknowledge the great work and time put in thus far by current middle school students and select representatives to improve and streamline middle school education and enrichment programs in our district. However, it is important that the district includes feedback from current elementary school families whose students will be the ones served as a result of the final realignment of all of our middle school programming. This is our opportunity to advocate for the programs and opportunities we want to see available to our future middle schoolers, and I ask that you add us to the process before it is finalized. Secondly, I would like to recognize the work of NVUSD teachers Evelyn Vega and Jennifer Viveros, who have served as the Napa AIM High Program Site Supervisors and have done an exceptional job over the last six years to grow, engage, and support middle school students and families through the AIM High Summer Program. They responded several years back to my request that students in American Canyon schools be included in the outreach services of their program. And I understand several sixth- to ninth-grade students are currently participating in that program now. Lastly, I want to encourage the district to continue to think beyond Napa proper in providing educational and enrichment services to students and families. Longstanding partnerships with the district have been limited to schools within the Napa city limits and based on former student demographic information. I would like to see the district amend educational and enrichment partnerships to be inclusive of services to students and sites in American Canyon. This would ensure greater access and opportunity for students in supporting college and career readiness that fosters students' abilities to thrive socially, emotionally, and academically. Please keep students, families, and sites in American Canyon in mind when renewing grants and service agreements.
Lastly, I just want to thank the board and all of our teachers and district staff. It has been a harrowing two years, and we have all appreciated you guiding us to this point and look forward to the remaining of the light at the end of this tunnel. Thank you. Thank you very much for your comment. Michaels, do we have any additional comments?
Yes, we do. Next speaker, Norma Ortiz. Go ahead, please.
Hello?
There you are.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Norma Ortiz. I want to thank the Redwood Middle School Leadership Team, especially Ms. Mary Ann Christopherson and Mr. Peter Hartneck for being inclusive and supporting our children, our parents, including myself, our Redwood Middle School community always being there and their excellent communication. I also appreciate all of my daughter's seventh-grade teachers who have worked diligently with her to best advance in her learning in these two trimesters. Redwood Middle School hosted an event on February 16th, 2022, book launch and author signing event at the library named "Overcoming Adversity", "Superando la adversidad". My daughter, Norma Ortiz, was a seventh grader. During her ELA class with Ms. Solani, wrote her essay. Her teacher supported her with her essay and art expression that reflects her experience and was published in pages 14 through 16. Please feel free to stop by our school to read and observe all the excellent work our seventh-grade students have accomplished writing about their experiences. There's an invitation to our next Redwood Middle School ELAC meeting, tentatively scheduled on April 20th, 2022, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. To honor our students at the different levels of engagement and participation, I would like to see El Dia del Niño, Children's Day Celebration. This happens April 30th in Mexico at an elementary level. Student Day could also be celebrated at middle school and high school, at high school levels to honor our students' achievements, culture, traditions, and more. Entrepreneurship Nights, more intensive supports for English language learners, orientations, and student and parent tours, especially for English language learner newcomer families to better navigate and understand the complexity of our school system. Paper notifications for those families that have and experienced challenges using technology. Also, the possibility of student and parent ambassadors to welcome incoming individuals at Napa Valley Unified School System, at the Napa Unified School District. The possibility of a welcome center and more. I really appreciate the board considering my input and perhaps in the future, we could see more events, more socializing events that could enrich the experience of our students, our community, and parents, and of course, our partners in our community. Parents and of course, our partners in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Yes, next speaker is Al Grega. Go ahead, please.
Hello, are you there?
We are here.
Okay, cool. All right. So I'd like to bring to your attention first and foremost, the late time in the evening of agenda items related to health and safety. Medical devices and procedures being discussed for our students, teachers and staff in NVSD. It's a serious concern that we have students, parents and teachers who have jobs. Students particularly that have jobs. Lives, families and even disabilities that require them to be in bed before 10:00 PM. I hope you guys can hear me. I've got my family coming home from work. See, we all have lives and this is the point. Historically, during meetings, I've had to wait until after 11, 12 or even 1:00 AM for these very hot topic items to be discussed. Is there a reason for this? I can't see that moving these items to the end of the meeting is fair or equal, especially as the amount of comments grows. I also can't see how it would hurt to make these meetings as inclusive as possible. We ask the board to implement discussing these sensitive, guys, you guys, sorry. We can't, we ask the board to implement discussing these sensitive items, even if informational in nature during the earlier part of the meeting. Second, there are over 110 people who've asked for math mandates to be added to the agenda. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. We urge you to either make a special meeting or add the item to the agenda as soon as possible. Thank you for your time. There's a lot of stuff going on. We just want to be heard. We want to be at the beginning of the meeting instead of the very last item of the agenda. As there are a lot of people who want to speak on this, who are being totally, totally, totally pushed off to the side because it's not accessible to them. So we ask that you see it in everybody's best interest to get the tone. And actual representation of the full community to make it as accessible as possible, especially as certain medical procedures. Are put on the agenda as mandates very quickly. So, thanks.
Thank you very much. Do we have any more speakers, Mr. Michaels?
Yes, we do. Next speaker is Laura Jones. Go ahead, please.
Hello. Can you hear me? Hi, yes. Thank you. Yeah, I just liked the second or third or fifth, the comment of putting these contentious issues to the front of the meetings. I know it's your responsibility to kind of hear public comment and like people have said before, if you leave it to the end. It almost feels like there's an intention to have fewer people give their input, which is, feels wrong. I'd also like to recognize that in-person learning, if there's one thing they've learned over the last two years. That in-person learning is very important. So anything that jeopardizes that, which is best for the students, is just flat out wrong. So, yeah. I think moving forward here, we'll get into the period where there's bullying. Both for and against, political bullying, teachers bullying students and I'd like the board to keep very cognizant of that. Also, I'd like to make a comment. You're in the education business and that industry is failing. So when people point to industry standard. It's a failing industry. So we look to you for leadership, to change things, to provide guidance. And that doesn't mean following guidance. That means actually doing what you think is right and best. So when I know things get weird with different levels of government, but you, the buck stops with you. For the district, you guys make the decisions, what is best for everyone. So I'd really appreciate it if you take some thought and not just follow orders. And actually do your job. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Yes, next speaker is Mary. Go ahead, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can.
Great, thank you. I want to thank you for the opportunity to comment. I've tried to join meetings a couple of times and. This is the first time I'm able to speak. I have concerns that I'm confident the board can help with. And that's been something that's been mentioned here multiple times. I feel like there's an ongoing issue with accessibility to important items in this for the school board meeting. There's been a number of important items on the agenda, particularly items the board does realize will have a lot of parental input. And these items have been placed as the last agenda items, causing them to be heard well after midnight. This dramatically limits the number of parents that can be involved in these meetings. In the spirit of inclusivity and community involvement, which I do understand are very important to the board and I do appreciate that. I'd ask if the board could put items such as these earlier in the agenda. I have attempted to join, as I said, and comment on multiple topics that have been heard and presented too late into the evening. I've fallen asleep listening to the board waiting for my agenda item to come up. Please ensure important community topics are heard at a reasonable time or in a special meeting if you feel like that is warranted. I'm not asking for. I do realize that the board, the meeting starts at seven and there's a lot of items to cover. But pushing important topics that will have a lot of parental input to the end on a very regular basis. Does cause concern for allowing our community to be involved in these important conversations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very. Mr. Michaels, do you have any additional comment?
We do. Next speaker is the initial M. Go ahead, please. Oh, they just dropped off. We're going to go with Pam. Go ahead, please, Pam.
Hi, hi, it's Ms. pandemic, Pandemic here. I would like you to move your hot topic. Health and safety items up a little bit earlier in the evening, up a little bit closer to the beginning of the agenda. Us parents have a lot, a lot we could really, we could advise you on and help you with. But staying up till like wee hours of the morning, it's just, it's just not, doesn't work for us. So. If you want our input, like you always say you do. I would like you to please. Keep, you know, listen, listen to the room and keep these important items upfront. Thank you very much and I'll be talking later. So, talk to you later. Bye.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Yes, the final speaker is C. Potter. Go ahead, please.
Good evening, can you hear me?
You can.
Thank you for hearing my public comment. During the last two years, we have all learned and experienced how important it is. For students to participate in in-person classroom learning. As opposed to the distance learning that we experienced a couple of years ago. Is simply more effective and more students are benefiting and reaping the rewards of being in the classroom. Yet, students are still struggling emotionally. And it remains more important than ever to continue offering in-person learning to all students while remaining respectful. And acknowledge that each student and all families have different personal and religious beliefs, as well as different situational parameters. For the decisions that we all are making for our children and for ourselves. It's important for the board to remember this when making very big decisions that will affect our community. And our schools and affect everyone's lives, really. So I really strongly encourage you to think about how different everyone's situation is when making these decisions. I would also request that the board strongly consider opening up these meetings. Back to being in person. Or at a minimum, allowing us to be able to make comments more easily with the hot topic items that are on the agenda. That have been continually brought up, asking you to move them closer to the start of the meeting so that we can all weigh in. And hear your thoughts on these decisions. They're all very important to us and we all want to hear your thoughts and we all want to have. Comments that will weigh in on your decision-making. Thank you very much for hearing my comments this evening.
We now move on to reports. Student Board Rep Bit, would you like to start us off this evening?
Yes, please. Okay, so first off, I just wanted to mention that two American Canyon High School students won first and second place in the Poetry Out Loud. National Recitation Contest. 11th grader Mitsura Bonkole won first place and 10th grader Paige Rizol was the runner-up. I'm actually close fans with Paige and I'm so proud of both of them. So. Thank you to Ms. Water and Ms. Chu for mentioning it to me. On March 1st, I presented to Yountville City Council on behalf of Napa Schools for Climate Action and. Next week, on March 8th, Tuesday, I'm going to be presenting to the Napa County Board of Supervisors. I'm a little bit nervous for that, but I'm pretty excited. So I'll let you guys know how it goes. And then I also really quickly wanted to mention that next week, American Canyon High School will be hosting Say Something Week. It's a national event created by the Sandy Hook Promise to prevent school violence, promote mental health resources and unite our student body. And we host activities for students such as like pledging to see, to see something, say something. And then we also share like the Sandy Hook Mission Statement and this year we've partnered with our Campus Wellness Center to. Host a wellness fair for students to better connect everyone with campus resources surrounding mental health. And it's something that we do every year and I've always been part of the planning process, but this year I'm especially proud because I'm in charge of it. And I'm sure there are other NVSD campuses who also participate or host similar events. So I just wanted to share, but that concludes my report for today.
Thank you. Trustee Water?
Well, let's see. Last week, I went to see Napa High's production of Little Shop of Horrors and I would like to say that. My colleague, Trustee Risers Daughters stole the show and their supporting roles. It was a lot of fun. It was a lot of fun. I felt like, gosh, we're getting normal again. And then the superintendent and I went to Shear's 100th Anniversary where we, you know, brought forth a hailstorm. And it was, it was great and. I attended a Napa County Office of Education meeting. And if anybody wants to see the students reciting poetry that Emily was talking about, Trustee Bit was talking about. You can go to www arts council nv.org. And I really, I was so proud when one of my students placed at the state level for that. This is. A national contest and it is a big deal. So we're very proud of our students. And, and you know, this is a little unorthodox, but I just want to say that I ran into a parent who was a contemporary of my children. Who has a child who went through American Canyon Schools and is in middle school now, Donaldson Way and then ACMS. And this parent could not say enough nice things about how helpful the teachers were. With, this child has, you know, sort of an unconventional learning style and. They just feel that, boy, he is on his way. He's doing so well and they were giving full credit. To the teachers for understanding him and helping him. So, thanks. Thanks, teachers down at ACMS and Donaldson Way.
Thank you, Trustee Water.
So I attended the Harvest Community Meeting. I reviewed the NCOE staff findings on the Maya Commas Charter Appeal. And I attended the NCOE meeting on March 1st.
Trustee Risers, thank you. On February 15th, I had a nice meeting, one-on-one with our Napa City Councilwoman Beth Painter. She had reached out to me to want to have some. Initial discussions about the community-centered property disposition that we are. You know, in the beginning stages of discussing with the Harvest Middle School Campus and that was really fruitful. I enjoyed that. On that day, there was also an American, City of American Canyon Two-by-Two meeting. On the 16th, there was, I attended a curriculum and student support board advisory committee meeting. I did also attend Little Shop of Horrors more than once. I'll leave it at that. But on that note, I am also planning on attending the ACHS Choir Concert next week and I'm looking forward to the vintage high school performance of Mamma Mia. So I'm an equal opportunity VAPA supporter. But a special shout out to Duncan Cooper, the Napa High Choir Director, who really knocked it out of the park with that Napa High Show. I did attend also, the Napa Valley Democrats put on a really interesting panel discussion on gun violence prevention. That included our State Attorney General Bonta. And also other speakers and that was really informative and an important discussion. The Chief of Police was there. I also listened in to the Harvest Community Engagement Meeting, the second one that we had, and then I hopped over on that. Right away to the ACMS African Americans Coalition Meeting. And just, I'm really impressed and grateful to that team at ACMS for doing that work and. Really showing up, walking the walk of equity in education and self-reflection and constant improvement. So I really appreciate that forum and I'm grateful. To those folks for continuing to do that work. I attended the Snow School Family Resource Center Grand Opening on 25th. I also reviewed, as Trustee Gracia mentioned, the NCOE. Report about the Maya Commas Charter Petition. And this concludes my report. Thank you very much. Trustee Gonzalez-Morris?
Yes, I attended. We had a stakeholder meeting with the Napa County Latin Next Democratic Club. This was an opportunity to give updates on Nunez Middle School. Also, our progress with ethnic studies and the Harvest Property as well. I also attended both the English and Spanish Harvest Community Meeting. So looking forward to more engagement there. There was more participation, I think, in the second one, especially with the Spanish group, but. And I also been following and reading the, and read the NCOE report on the Maya Commas Charter. And I did not attend the Napa High event, but my niece went and she was so excited that she wanted to. Join choir and do more theater herself and I was just jaw-dropped by that. I was like, that's awesome. And I look forward to also attending the choir concert at American Canyon. So, looking forward to that.
Trustee Chu?
So I attended many of the same committee meetings and community engagement meetings that some of my trustees, other trustees have done. In addition. I went to two meetings because those are my kids' schools. One is the ACMS African American Coalition that Trustee Risers mentioned. And also the Canyon Oaks Site Council Meeting, both of which mentioned Aries Analytics. And I actually got to see that in action at the Site Council Meeting when they showed. A little glimpse of our star reading and math assessment. So. It was very powerful to be able to just have the site leaders pull up. The data and show. So I'm very grateful that that is up and running. And that training has occurred at our sites to be able to show our parents that that is, here's our data when asked. In addition to congratulating all the ACHS student winners of the Poetry Out Loud Contest. ACMS is also proud to have a winner of a Mass Mutual Foundation Future Smart Scholarship. Alexander Lee, who is an eighth grader, wrote a. An essay on what it meant to him to learn about insurance and this is part of the Everify. Career Exploration Program that some of our teachers at ACMS are implementing for their kids in exploratory class. So. Really, really happy to see that he gets a scholarship to go to college. So, really interested in seeing where he ends up in four years' time. And I also attended the Little Shop of Horrors, dragged my fourth grader. So, sorry, Dr. Musseri, one of your fourth graders was out past his bedtime. But he did enjoy the progression of the plant. Going to this humongous plant and was very intrigued by how it all worked, the whole puppetry. So really, really happy to be able to do that in person at the theater and he got to see a high school. And my same fourth grader told me that I missed a report last time. So on the 10th, he and 49 of his fellow fourth graders at Canyon Oaks participated in. A national assessment of educational progress. And so when our nation's report card comes out this coming year. And so when our nation's report card comes out this coming year, NVUSD will be part of that. And I believe Redwood is also another participant in that assessment. So really looking forward to that report, especially this year. And my last, um, item is I actually had other community engagement that was much more fun. I read to, uh, about 90, uh, school age children, or Canyon Oaks children, um, for Read Across America on Wednesday. Um, they loved it because they actually got to see somebody else, another adult in their classroom. Um, and the best part was when they realized the story I was reading was about the real story of why Winnie the Pooh was Winnie the Pooh. It was an epiphany moment. So I, I did, that's one of my favorite volunteering activities. And I'm very grateful that, um, the school invited me to go in and share that with the students. And that concludes my report.
Oh, thank you for that report. Trustee Dooley.
I have a, a pretty short report. My, my personal, uh, life has been rather hectic. So my, uh, NVSD report is short. Um, I have the, uh, Curriculum and Student Support Advisory Committee on the 16th. And then I missed the Harvest, uh, Community Input Session, but I watched the entire video. Uh, actually probably after 11 that same night. So I, I, I did catch up on it. Um, and I am looking forward to, uh, the American Canyon High School Choir Concert. Um, I'm going to bring my, my son who just joined the choir at Northwood Elementary. So, uh, I, I hope it's inspiring to him to, uh, to keep with that. So that's my report.
Thank you very much. Um, Happy Women's History Month. I had the pleasure of attending meetings at VHS for their 50th year celebrations. I, uh, visited the River Campus and Evan Versalini masterfully navigated math instruction in a engaging and impressive manner. It was as if each student was creating a math dictionary, creating five approaches for a singular prob, singular problem. Integrating critical thinking and problem solving with communication and comprehension. Students took turns sharing their approach and well articulated the why to each problem. It was great. And I had the pleasure of observing Megan Burton weave arts integration into a history project. The students were utilizing writing, art, research, communication, collaboration and visualization into each project. And it really was a joy to watch each group work together to find an approach that was not only collaborative, but that allowed them to utilize a multiple of individual, a multitude of individual skill sets as well. So I enjoyed my visit. I too attended the Harvest Community Input Meeting. I too reviewed the staff findings and attended the NCOE Board Meeting on Tuesday. And I attended the Middle School Parent Leadership Forum. So Board Representative Reports, did the Special Education Community Advisory Committee meet?
No, they did not.
City of American Canyon?
We did meet. Um, we just continued our discussions on property.
Okay. We did also briefly discuss some community concerns about traffic safety. Um, after there were a couple of, uh, incidents, a recent one with a student on a bike on his way to school getting, luckily he is, was safe and, and unscathed, but there was a run-in with a car. And so we brought that to the committee and sort of talked about how the city might, um, be more supportive or increase their support for safety for our students coming to and fro.
Thank you very much. City of Napa?
We haven't met yet. Yeah.
Town of Yountville.
It's been nearly 14 months now since last we met.
Thank you very much. Uh, Dr. Musetti, do you have, uh, superintendent comments and executive staff?
We do. So, um, good evening, NVSD community and trustees. Um, I want to echo, it was a pleasure to be with some of you at the Snow Family Resource, uh, Center Grand Opening. And yes, Trustee Water, that, uh, visited Sheer for the 100th, um, celebration and the hailstorm was forever memorable. Uh, for, for their, um, our Sheer students for sure. And it was a pleasure, um, I toured Redwood with, uh, Principal Marion Christopherson, did a visit there. Um, along with our Director of Secondary, Ms. Monica Ready, uh, reporting to some constituents about the good work that we're doing in terms of middle school redesign. Um, I want to start out, there've been some congratulations. I want to, um, let you all know that the, that the story about the American Canyon, um, uh, poetry winners is already on the NVSD website and a, and a story has been released around it. So congratulations. I also want to add another, start off and kick off with good news. Um, we received notice that, um, on behalf of the Board of Directors from the California Association for Bilingual Education, known as CABE, that our sixth grader, um, this Ava C. Osborne was selected as the sixth through eighth grade grade, grade level student essay writing winner. Uh, she will be presented an award at the annual conference. It's supposed to be in San Francisco, but they decided to virtualize it again this year on Friday, April 1st. So we are very proud of her and this is evidence. She's a sixth grader at Pueblo Vista. It's evidence of what our students in the dual language immersion program can accomplish with the powerful gift of bilingualism and biliteracy. Um, in addition, I'd like to take this opportunity to communicate with the public formally about the new mask mandate that, um, I'm sure most, uh, everyone has heard about, uh, following Governor Newsom's recent announcement regarding new statewide masking guidelines. Masks will no longer be a requirement inside schools and childcare facilities. As of Monday, March 14th, NVSD will adopt new indoor mask policies that remove the requirement to mask indoors in all schools across the district. However, masks will be strongly recommended in keeping with the updated guidance per Cal OSHA. These new guidelines will also apply to our employees. Um, next, I'd also just like to remind everybody that on March the 17th, the upcoming board meeting, two weeks from tonight, we will be opening up the boardroom. Our board meetings will start to be in a hybrid format. The NVSD Board of Education will begin to, um, hold its meeting, its meetings in this format, uh, on March 17th. And for the remainder of the board calendar year for, for this spring, through June. This new format will allow for the boardroom to be open to the public for those who'd like to attend in person um, and follow local and state public guidelines while still allowing for full remote participation via Zoom. So look for that adjustment on our website and on our board agendas that will be published, um, from here on out. Um, I also just want to honor that it's in the same boardroom. It'll be to the two-year anniversary, um, next year, uh, next year, next week. Um, where we held a special board meeting here, um, a- around the, the decision to engage in the closing of our school system due to COVID-19. And it's been, as you all know, very difficult two years, but we are so excited about seeing the light at the end of the tunnel here and really getting back to what feels like a lot of normal. Um, so that's good for our kids and for our staff and for our families. Um, in addition, I'd like to let you know that on Tuesday evening, Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings, Director Monica Ready and myself, along with all the middle school principals, we led a middle school parent leadership forum where we discussed ways that we can support families across the middle schools as we implement the transitions for next year, with many students joining new school communities. These current parent leaders made recommendations and suggestions as to how we can work with PTOs, school site councils and ELAX in ensuring families feel welcomed next year at new schools while creating an inclusive environment for everyone. We really appreciated their time and collaboration and they just made really great contributions that'll help us improve our work. Lastly, um, I do know that many staff, students and parents have, uh, shared with me directly or expressed in other ways the distress they are feeling as our world observes the act of aggression, uh, by a major world power, power like Russia and the Ukraine right now. As a district, we recognize that some of the stress is brought to the school and that it can cause students to ask a lot of questions about conflict, political tensions and the vulnerability of world peace. And the USD is confident that our school communities have the tools to help students process global events and crises like these in a way that they feel sa- safe while also feeling empathy for, um, those who may be suffering. So with that, I'm going to pass it on to my assistant superintendents and we're going to start with Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings, who oversees the Instructional Services Division.
Um, thank you, Dr. Musetti. Good evening, President Jankowicz, Board Trustees, Board Trustees, Student Board Representative, but Dr. Um, Dr. Musetti in the NVSD community. It has, um, as Dr. Musetti mentioned, it has almost been two years since the board took action to close our schools temporarily due to the COVID-19 pandemic. During the past two years, the Instructional Division has pivoted from all-in-person learning to all-at-home, to virtual instruction, to hybrid, hybrid instruction, and finally back to all-in-person instruction. We have trained teachers, other instructional staff, students and caregivers on how to use the multiple new platforms and tools we purchased to assist with virtual and hybrid learning. We have established COVID testing protocols, contact tracing procedures, and figured out how to continue extracurricular activities during a pandemic. We continue to address issues resulting from chronic absenteeism due, due to quarantine requirements and illness. We have had to pause during the day, the school day professional learning due to a lack of substitute teachers, um, available. Yet we have implemented a new discipline toolkit, created functioning MTSS teams with a designated lead at each site, and created intensive intervention programs at our elementary school sites. We have worked to redesign our middle schools to ensure a high-quality experience for students and families. Later, you will hear from Director Monica Ready about the intentional, thoughtful and collaborative work on the middle school redesign that has been done in community with staff, students and parents, as well as, um, the A to G plan that she will present. Tonight, Dr. Abud will share the winter assessment data that shows that 62% of our students, um, have typical or high growth on grade level standards math and 65% in English language art across our district. I'm proud of the work we have accomplished over the past two years and to see evidence of the hard work reflected in our assessment data. I would like to take a moment to acknowledge the ongoing hard work of our instructional staff. Our teachers, principals, um, and the Instructional Division have remained focused on learning even with the overwhelming demands that COVID, the COVID-19 pandemic has placed on our system. We still have quite a bit of work to do to ensure that all of our students are making progress. But as we have always shown in, in the USD, we do hard things. Um, thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you. And next we'll have, um, Assistant Superintendent Dana Page, who oversees the Human Resources Division, report out.
Good evening, President Jankowicz, Board of Trustees, Dr. Musetti and Student Board Representative Bit. We are happy to announce that NVSD is participating for the fourth year in the Summer Assistance Program for Classified Employees. The Summer Assistance Program is a grant offered from the California Department of Education, which provides funding to match the amount that participating employees set aside of their own earnings to supplement their summer paycheck. The opportunity is available for eligible employees who are earning below $62,000 a year annually and working less than 12 months. I'd like to thank Cheryl Anderson and Elizabeth Gonzalez from the HR Office, who have been working hard signing up 264 employees. On another note regarding classified employees, um, you will see tonight a resolution to eliminate some classified positions. I want to share with the community that although we are eliminating a substantial number of positions due to declining enrollment and school closures, we have been hard at work reassigning these employees into new roles for the 22, 23 school year. In fact, there are only eight employees who we were not able to assign to equal positions. They will be the only classified employees who receive layoff notices before March 15th. We will continue to look for new positions that restore them completely and feel very optimistic that will be possible before the end of the school year. Lastly, I want to encourage everyone to view our latest staff spotlight featuring Sarah Mendez, who is an extraordinary bilingual instructional assistant at Vintage High School. Sarah was nominated by the VHS staff for her outstanding work supporting English language learners. Sarah shared one of her favorite quotes, which I loved also, "Don't let anyone rent a space in your head unless they're a good tenant." Sarah's positivity and motivation to do her best for herself, her family and the students she works with is evident in all she does. We are lucky to have her as an employee and happy to feature her in the spotlight. This concludes my report.
Ms. Page, next we'll hear from Assistant Superintendent Rob Mangwala, who oversees Business Services.
Thank you for the opportunity to update the board and the community. The business office is putting the final touches on our second interim report, which will, will be brought to the board at the next board meeting. The second interim will show the impacts of a potential charter school and the latest economic information. We're also watching our enrollment numbers and our student information system as compared to projections. Enrollment numbers are currently below projections, but it's too early to draw any conclusions. Later tonight, Dr. Abud will present the results of the second admission of our STAR assessments. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mangwala and, um, Mr. Pearson, Mike Pearson, our Assistant Superintendent of Operational Services, will close out the staff reports.
Good evening, President Jankowicz, NVSD Board of Trustees, Dr. Musetti, Student Board Representative Emily Bit and members of the NVSD community. Thank you for an opportunity to provide you with an update from Operational Services. The Operational Services Team has been collaborating closely with the Instructional Division over the past several weeks to help facilitate a smooth transition to the Expanded Learning Opportunity Programs that will start occurring, uh, this summer at various NVSD campuses. We are excited to partner with the Instructional Team to ensure students can participate in robust and rich, uh, learning experiences this summer. Additionally, the upcoming NVSD Professionals Day on March 11th will also allow for members of the Operational Services Team to improve and/or update their skills. Specifically, the Food Service Employees will participate in food safety training. Custodians will learn how to use a hand auger with the help of our plumbers from our maintenance department. And maintenance employees will be recertified in best practices when using a lift. Also, head custodians and maintenance lead workers will learn about the NVSD Asset Management Prevention and Protection Program, specifically what to notice, what to notify and how to, how everyone can help when possible. These leaders will then collaborate to identify and determine how maintenance and operations employees can assist in protecting our buildings and our grounds in a systematic way. Lastly, as part of our Asset Management Prevention and Protection Program, there are two action items on tonight's agenda for your approval. And Trustee Chu reminded me that we also in Operational Services participated in the Read Across America at Canyon Oaks. Gloria Agwire has a Director of Operations and Albert De Souza, who's the Director of Maintenance and Grounds, uh, read at Canyon Oaks as well as I did. And I'll give a shout out to Julie Meyer Houston in her fourth grade class for an unbelievable experience. Thank you all. This concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pearson. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Background information on these items is provided to the board prior to the meeting. A common motion takes action without discussion on a roll call vote unless discussion of item or items is requested by the board or board members.
Move to approve.
First by Trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by Trustee Dooley. Vera, may we please have a roll call vote?
Yes. Student Board Member Bit?
Hi.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Hi.
Trustee Gracia?
Hi.
Trustee Water?
Hi.
Trustee Risar?
Hi.
Trustee Gonzalez-Morris?
I.
Trustee Chu?
I.
Trustee Dooley?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vera. Presentations and discussion items. Our first presentation is Bring Change to Mind Program Presentation. Bring Change to Mind is a nonprofit organization dedicated to encouraging dialogue about mental health and to raising awareness, understanding and empathy. We heard from Hamena earlier, uh, this evening as Student of the Month and she's joined by Carla and Luisa. They are going to, they, pardon me, I'm sorry, student or blah blah. We're giving leadership over their Napa High Bring Change to Mind Club their sophomore year. They will share about the growth the club has experienced, the impact Bring Change to Mind had on the Napa High community and what they hope to accomplish in their final months as high school students. Hamena, welcome back.
Hello. Um, I believe I'm going to share my screen. I actually don't know that it'll let me. My apologies.
Can she, Mr. Michaels, can she do the screen share function?
She can. I, I also have the presentation. I can put it up and you can just ask me to go to the next slide if you'd like.
That would be great. Please, thank you. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Um, we would like to thank you all for, for this opportunity because we are so happy to be doing this. And we are the Napa High Bring Change to Mind Club. And today, two-thirds of our Bring Change to Mind Co-Presidents will be presenting myself, Carla Dominguez, and like you heard, Hamena. Unfortunately, Luisa could not be here with us tonight, but we are doing this for her too. But we are here to talk about Bring Change to Mind and the impacts this club has had on our campus. Oh, next slide.
Next slide. So, um, Bring Change, good evening, everyone. I'm Heman Alvarez Para, um, and I am one of the three co-presidents, like Carla said. And Bring Change to Mind is a nonprofit organization dedicated to encouraging dialogue about mental health and to raising awareness, understanding. understanding, and empathy, and this is what our club strives to honor.
Okay, next slide, please. Thank you. Glenn Close started Bring Change to Mind after her sister was diagnosed with bipolar disorder and her nephew with schizophrenic disorder. And here's Glenn Close over here. She was in 101 Dalmatians as an actress. And Bring Change to Mind had their first PSA in 2009. Their high school program launched in 2015, and they now have 390 schools participating across America with 10,000 students participating.
Next slide. Um, the, our club was founded by Senior Emma Healy in 2018, and it began as a small club of less than 10 people attending the biweekly meetings. And not many people knew about the club or what it was about or that it even existed. But Carla, Luisa, and I were one of the few consistent underclassmen members who showed high interest in Bring Change to Mind's mission. And once Emma, once it was time for Emma to graduate, she passed the torch to us, and that's how we all became co-presidents of this club. Next slide, please.
And you may ask, why is mental health so important to be talked about? And how are our teens being impacted by mental health? So suicide is the second leading cause of death from ages 10 to 24. Fifty percent of mental illness presents before the age of 14, and it often takes eight to 10 years between onset of symptoms and receiving treatment. And that is the numbers we want to lower, especially in our community of Napa. Next slide, please.
In a handful of our meetings, we've done some school activities, and some of these pictures are of one of the activities that we did where we put sticky notes with compliments in the girls' bathroom. We posted a Take What You Need poster where we wrote down affirmations onto sticky notes, and people could stop by and grab a sticky note at any time of the day. A wall of compliments wall where we took a Polaroid picture of a person or a group of friends, and we stuck it to poster paper, and people wrote compliments under other people's photos. And one of our favorites has been when we hand out self-care kits to students during finals week. We've done them during our sophomore and senior year, and these little kits include gum, tea bags, stickers, stress balls, tissues, and quotes of affirmation. Next slide, please.
Next is one of my favorite things about the club is our Bring Change to Mind Summit. So every year, all of the Northern California schools meet in a particular location to talk about mental health. And my freshman year, it was in Twitter, Twitter headquarters. Our sophomore year, it was at Pinterest. And this Saturday, we were, we are attending our final summit at Oracle Park. And my favorite part about these events are the keynote speakers that speak about their experiences. Usually they are really famous people, like this Saturday we will be hearing from a famous former Giants football player, Hunter Pence. And I also really appreciate when we break out into small groups and you get to hear about voices from other students who go to other schools in the Bay Area and their experiences with mental health and in their communities. Next slide, please.
Some club activities that we've done is when our regional club manager, Brenda Williams, comes to visit from San Francisco, typically at our first meetings to explain what the club is to our new members. We've made Halloween themed stress balls out of flour and balloons. Our club members write gratitude cards to people they were grateful for during the Thanksgiving season. And not pictured are our meditation sessions where we do about 20-minute to 10-minute meditation sessions on Headspace, which is a free membership that Bring Change to Mind provides for registered club members. Next slide, please.
This is our community outreach, and Luisa Ortega writes these. These go in our newsletter every week. And this is our attempt to try to get the word out of mental health and our club to the parents and teachers of Napa High. This one in specific was written about Black History Month, which was put into our February newsletter. And to talk a little bit about Luisa, she has also worked closely with Dr. Ainsworth to help and try to get the teachers to be mentally health-trained and to learn more about what to do if a student is having a panic attack or if the student is struggling with their mental health and how to help. Next slide, please.
So what we hope to accomplish is to overall create a good environment for our future classes in Napa High. And to keep the club going, we've selected our new leaders who will be juniors and seniors next year. So we're guaranteed two years of this club's continuation. We are currently celebrating Bring Change to Mind Week, which is a week where Bring Change to Mind Clubs all across the nation join forces and do activities that surround an overarching theme. And this year's theme is collaborative power. And like Carla mentioned, this Saturday is our annual summit in San Francisco, and we're all really excited to go. And just our overall goal is to remove the mental health stigma on our campus. Next slide, please.
Here we have two very important numbers. The first one is the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline Network. And the second one is Bring Change to Mind's own crisis text line, and both of these are completely free to use. Thank you. Next slide.
On behalf of Carla, Luisa, and I, we want to thank you all for your time. And if you have any questions, I've included my email and our club's Instagram account. And to learn more about Bring Change to Mind as a whole, the organization, we've linked their website as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Before I go to the board, do we have any public comment on this presentation?
We do not have public comment on this item.
Thank you very much.
But we actually just had someone raise their hand. Would you like to take it?
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Michaels.
Okay, Norma Ortiz, go ahead, please.
Well, I'm very excited for the, this, this presentation, all the hard work. Keep it going, Napa High. You guys are doing an excellent job. As part of, also part of the community, I like to see this type of enrichment opportunities, this outreach out there that you guys are trying to inspire other youth. So thank you.
Thank you, Norma. Board.
I really enjoyed tonight's presentation, so thank you for bringing that to us. And I just had one question. What kind of tea were you guys passing out in your care bags?
We bought like a variety pack on Amazon, and there were like all types of teas.
Trustee Chu.
Can I ask, are there any other Napa High schools that have this program in their school?
I know Vintage High has their own Bring Change to Mind chapter. And at American Canyon, there's a club similar. It's called Active Minds. And St. Helena has just like started their own like wellness program, but only Bring Change to Mind Clubs at Vintage and Napa High.
Great. Thank you, and thank you for being a leader in this field. I know we all need it.
Trustee Gonzalez Maris.
Yeah, I think it's just so important to have the stigma removed on mental health. And what better than to have our, our own youth to spread that and be leaders within their own schools and community to do that and, and impacting other schools as well to trustees choose question. And just, I just love the little examples of creativity and connection and being intentional, especially with everything that is going on. So keep planting those seeds and, and just congratulations for, for your time and energy on top of your busy curricular schedules, as, as we all know that you're busy during this time. So just thank you for, for advocating on that and, and being strong leaders in this aspect.
Trustee Ricer.
Yeah, I want to second what my fellow trustees have said. What a great presentation and what an impressive example of just empowered and, and meaningful impact that you're having with your peers. I agree with trustee Gonzalez Maris that it's especially at the high school level. I think this kind of outreach and normalizing of having conversations about mental health challenges or the needing help lands so much more powerfully coming from a peer. So I just want to thank you all, Hamena and Carla and Luisa, I know isn't with us tonight, but your leadership on this issue is incredibly powerful. And we, we may never know how many lives you're saving by doing this work. So to add it on top of what you're doing with your really rigorous and demanding school schedules is really a gift to us and to your classmates. And I'm really grateful to hear that you've enlisted some, some underclassmen to, to take the baton from you. I know my younger daughter is going to the summit. She hasn't been doing this club so much, but is on team, the, the team council and is looking, I'm really looking forward to hearing from her about that summit. And it just reminded me of something that Director Knox said, I think it was in a, a presentation about MTSS. And we had a slight increase in, in students reporting mental health, you know, challenges or concerns. And she said, you know, we think that this might be because people feel more comfortable saying that they are struggling. And so every little thing that you're doing, the positive affirmations for self-esteem, the support kits, I mean, it's all just part of the same effort. And thank you for taking on that goal to, to, to reduce the stigma because it's, it's incredibly powerful. So just very grateful and, and it was a great presentation.
Would you like to?
I've said before that I think we've handed a lot of tasks to young people. We're expecting them to solve our climate crisis, gun violence. But you know, this is one, this is one activity where I think teenagers are, are particularly effective, often better than any adult. And I feel very sure you are having a positive effect. You may not know about it, but you'll be walking down the street 25 years from now, and someone will walk up to you and tell you how much you helped them. And so keep it up. Good job. I'm very proud of you.
I too want to thank you. It's, it's something that, that, you know, I know growing up myself, it was not something we talked about. It was not something that, that was part of our, our language to talk about mental health. And it, people suffered for that and people I know personally. And so I am very grateful that, that students are learning the language and that you are an instrumental, your, your group is an instrumental part of that. And yeah, I, I appreciate it. Thank you.
We want to thank you for your awareness, your willingness to take action, and the capacity to understand the impact of your efforts. As you have heard from the board, we appreciate your thought-provoking work and your dedication to consciousness around mental health. Ladies, thank you very much. You are making a difference. Okay. Business Services, Winter 2022 Star Assessment Data. Dr. Peter Abu, Director of Data Assessment Services, will present a summary of the Winter 2022 Star Assessments data and compare it to the Fall 2021 baseline data. Instructional Services Directors, Mr. Matt Manning, Monica Reddy, and Sarah Knox will speak to the data's implications on the district's instructional work. Dr. Abud.
All right. Hello, everyone. Good evening. All right. Can you all see my screen? Okay?
We can.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Good evening, President Jankowicz, Trustees, Dr. Masetti, and Student Board Member Bit. I am pleased to share with you our Winter 2022 Star Assessments data. We now have two data points that were both administered while students were participating in full-time in-person learning. So this evening you will see an emphasis on the growth between the fall and the winter and after our presentation.
I'm so sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
But we're seeing a visual right now, but we don't have any data on the screen.
Oh, I'm sorry. Give me one moment here. Let's see. Mr. Michaels, would you mind sharing your screen? It looks like I'm having some technical issues.
And again, I apologize for interrupting.
No, that's all right. Excellent. Thank you. All right. Thank you for that, Mr. Michaels.
This is the fall. That's the fall data. We need the winter one.
All right, Mr. Michaels, I just reshared it with you. Sorry about that, everyone.
No worries.
Okay, one second, everyone. Sorry.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, let's go ahead and go to the next slide. Our district's work around assessments falls under our strategic plan goal number one, Student Learning Achievement and Access. And specifically, it falls under the College and Career Readiness Initiative and the tactic describing the development of a robust and balanced assessment system. Next slide, please. Additionally, the STAR assessments provides a key data point in support of annual board priority number two, the development of a multi-tiered system of support, and annual board priority number three, TK-12 Mathematics Program Alignment. Next slide. Before we look closely at the Winter 2022 data, I'd like to take a moment to remind the board and the community about some of the key data points that we looked at in the past and will revisit again this evening. First, the scaled score. Students who take a STAR assessment are given a scaled score based on the number of questions answered correctly and the difficulty of those questions, and allows us to compare student progress over time and across grade levels. We also have the percentile rank. Students are given a percentile rank indicating the percentage of other students nationally who obtain scores equal to or lower than that of the, of the particular student. For example, a student in the 35th percentile in STAR reading performed better than 35% of students nationally in the same grade level as that student who took the assessment at that same time last year. Next slide, please. Renaissance categorizes students based on their percentile rank. Students who score better than 40% of students nationally in their grade level at that time of the school year are considered at or above benchmark. There are four total categories ranging from at or above benchmark all the way to those in need of urgent intervention who are scoring below the 10th percentile rank. Next slide, please. Remember, the students are expected to earn a higher and higher scaled score as they progress through their learning. For example, an eighth grader who took the STAR math test in the fall needs a scaled score of 1078 to be at or above benchmark, and that minimum scaled score increases over time. And by the time that eighth grader takes the test in the spring, they will need a scaled score of 1094. Next slide. I'd also like to take a moment to review which students take which assessments. Students in grades three through 12 take the STAR reading test, and students in grades kindergarten through second grade will take the STAR Early Literacy Test until their reading abilities develop enough that they can be reliably assessed with STAR reading. Typically, this transition happens in second grade. And students in grades one through 12 take the STAR math test. Next slide. Here we have the participation rates for the Winter 2022 tests broken down by span. As usual, our teachers and administrators did an excellent job assessing students. Keep in mind that the testing window opened shortly after winter break when we were experiencing an increase in student and teacher absences, which makes these participation rates especially impressive. In particular, I would like to recognize Vishi Elementary School, Redwood Middle School, and American Canyon High School as the elementary, middle, and high school with the highest participation rates. Next slide. What you see on this and the following slides is our Winter 2022 data compared to the Fall 2021 data. The percentage represents the percent of students who are considered at or above benchmark or in the 40th percentile or above. Here we have the STAR Early Literacy Comparison for grades K1. Next slide. Before I talk about second grade literacy, I'd like to define an additional data point that is used by Renaissance, and that is the Student Growth Percentile, or SGP. The SGP indicates the percentage of students nationally at the same grade level and with a similar score history as a particular student who grew less than that student over a defined period of time. For example, a student with an SGP of 60 from fall to winter grew better than 60% of students nationally who had a similar score as that student in the fall. Students with an SGP between 35 and 65 are making typical growth, growth, while those with an SGP below 35 are making low growth, and those with an SGP above 65 are making. and those with an SGP above 65 are making high growth. Next slide. As you may call, as you may recall from previous presentations, second graders will take either STAR early literacy or STAR reading depending on their skill level. In the fall, we had 446 second graders take STAR reading and 635 students take STAR early literacy. In the winter, that number, the number of students taking STAR reading increased to 739 and the number of students taking STAR early literacy decreased to 334. This shift is to be expected as students develop their literacy skills over the course of the year. Go ahead and click, Mr. Michaels. Because of the two different, because of the two different tests at this grade level, it is difficult to compare growth from fall to winter. Instead, I want to highlight the SGP score for second grade since that can be calculated independent of which literacy test students took. You can see that there that about two thirds of our second graders made typical or high growth in literacy from fall to winter and about a third had have made low growth. This is comparable to the literacy SGP of all students in the district from fall to winter. Next slide, please. We now switch over to STAR, to the STAR reading test. Here are the elementary proficiency rates from fall to winter. Next slide. And for middle school. Next slide. And high school. All right, next slide, please. Here we have the elementary proficiency rates for STAR math. Next slide. And for middle school. And next slide for high school. Thank you. Let's go ahead and go to the next slide. After reviewing the growth from fall to winter, a natural question to ask is whether or not this growth is what we would have, is what we would expect. And so I want to come back to that concept of the SGP. For both the literacy and math assessments, nearly two thirds of our student population is making typical or high growth and a third is making low growth. Next slide, please. I would also like to share some more detailed data about the student performance beyond just the students who are at or above benchmark. Here you can see the early literacy scores broken down by performance level for both kindergarten and first grade. And next slide. Here's the breakdown for STAR reading. And next slide for math. Now, let's go to the next slide, please. At the fall presentation, trustees had asked about the proficiency of our subgroups. Here you can see the percentage of students at or above benchmark for each assessment compared to our subgroups of interest. And we can recognize that there is a little bit of a gap for our subgroups. Let's go to the next slide. As I've done in the past, I'd like to remind the board and the community that just because a student is considered at or above benchmark based on national norms, that it does, excuse me, that it does not necessarily mean that the student is proficient based on state standards. This chart compares the percentage of students who are nationally at or above benchmark to the percentage of students who have met or exceeded standard on the state benchmarks, which are designed to predict performance on the CASP. And with that, I will pass it to my colleagues in Instructional Services to discuss the implications of this work, to discuss the implications of this data on the work happening in the Instructional Services Division. So next slide, please.
Thank you, Dr. Abud. Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to review some of the work that we are doing at the elementary level to support student growth in both math and English language arts. I will start by sharing some information about ELA and then move on to math. Last year, we recognized a critical need to improve early literacy skills in kindergarten through second grade in order to build a strong foundation for overall literacy development. We appreciate the board's support for the purchase of an improved phonics component of our core reading program Benchmark Phonics. As teachers began using this resource earlier this year, we have provided ongoing professional development and coaching. All teachers using the program attended initial training and we are finishing up with the next level of PD on March 11. The elementary academic specialists have pushed into every K2 classroom for support with co-planning, coaching and lesson modeling. The academic specialist team recorded model lessons to be used by other teachers wanting to see the program in action. Principals received training and have been provided with a tool for them to use in providing coaching and feedback to teachers related to phonics instruction. All K2 students are assessed at least once per trimester to determine their growth and overall areas of need. Excuse me, just a moment. Specifically in phonics. Professional learning is being offered to all teachers in grades K through five. Typically, much of this professional learning would take place during the day with sub-release time. But this year, these opportunities have needed to be scheduled after school hours. I want to thank the teachers for their commitment to their own learning even amidst the pandemic. We have 58 teachers attending science of reading training and conducting learning sprints back in their classrooms. Forty-four teachers attended a sound wall training. A sound wall is a visual representation in the classroom of the sounds that letters and groups of letters make. Ninety-two teachers are attending quarterly grade level focused communities of practice. Next slide, please. Thank you. Our emphasis on math has continued since the beginning of the school year and has reached all schools, sites and classrooms across the district. Four of the six coaching weeks with Pia Hansen from Bridges are complete and retired teacher and math coach Barb Corna has provided 100 hours of additional coaching and lesson modeling this year. Seven model number corner lessons have been recorded and are being prepared for use as a resource for teachers wanting to see strong examples of math instruction. Number corner is is a critical component of the Bridges math curriculum that we have been focusing on because this is where students have an opportunity to learn and then revisit math concepts to solidify learning. Math assessments have been aligned with the priority standards and our new progress report. Principals continue to observe and provide feedback to students and math teachers during number corner lessons. Based on this observational data and the STAR math data, principals will be developing math learning sprints with SMART goals to monitor progress between now and the next STAR assessment. A group of elementary principals will lead their colleagues in this work at the next principal meeting. Thank you. And with that, I will pass to Director Ready, who will talk about secondary information.
Thank you, Director Manning. Next slide, please. Good evening and thank you for the time to present on the instructional approach to support all students at the secondary level. We will continue to focus on building strong first round instruction in response to our winner STAR data. We're taking a similar approach with both English and math to tier one or first round instruction. English has aligned priority standards and proficiency scales that staff are using and have received training on the usage of clarity and feedback during the professional learning days. Additionally, all staff have received training on the STAR assessment data and how to use that data to impact instruction. Site leaders and teachers in English and English language, English language development, or ELD, are participating in learning sprints focused on in-class instructional practices that support students during their first round of instruction. District level teachers on special assignment or TOSSAs are providing coaching to staff in support of these goals. Additionally, principals are receiving training on how to use these learning sprints to impact their practice with their staff and their students. With a heavy focus on math this year, we know that reading and literacy is an area of growth at the secondary level. We are currently addressing this by increasing access to Renaissance Accelerated Reader at the middle school level. We continue to track library circulation data and work to increase circulation as we know that reading is critical to growth. As a part of new funding called Lead to Literacy Director Study and team is working to support the literacy of students with IEPs in the middle schools. Additionally, we are meeting with every English department over the next two months to listen and learn from our staff and develop a more strategic plan to address the reading results at the secondary level. Next slide, please. Our work with math continues as it's been an area of focus this entire year. Thank you to our board annual priority number three. Our math staff, even amongst the pandemic, has been able to work in work groups to create, review and revise our priority standards. So there's consistency across our math at each grade level. And there's articulation from grade level to grade level with particular attention to our transition points from fifth to sixth grade and eighth to ninth grade. We have finished developing and refining our proficiency scales so that we can assess students and they have clarity around where they are, where they are going and what they can do next to help support their growth in mathematics. We are reviewing and revising assessments so that our assessments are aligned to those proficiency scales. And we're moving forward with direct instruction and support for high impact strategies, much like I mentioned with English Language Arts, through the use of learning sprints that are aligned to goals. Our staff is working with our, our staff from the district office is working with our principals and our teachers so that we can have goals within classrooms and it impacts instruction through these learning sprints. All of our math teachers have been trained on STAR assessment and using that assessment data to make changes in their instructional practices within the classroom. Additionally, we have been, DreamBox at the middle school level is a tool that staff are using with their students and students are using within the school day and at home to help with their mathematical practices. At the secondary level at the high school, we're piloting Freckle, which is aligned to the Renaissance STAR results to see if this is an intervention that we can use at the high school level in the future. And as we look towards summer, we'll continue to recruit students so that we can provide those prerequisite skills moving into their ninth grade year to provide them more support as they move into Math One, hopefully with more success. With that, I will hand it over to Director Knox to provide more information about interventions.
Thank you. Next slide, please. Good evening. I am here to talk to you this evening about implications for the STAR data on our interventions and MTSS implementation, which is, as Director Ready mentioned, one of our board priorities along with the math alignment priority. So for, when we're looking at the STAR data, what we're really looking at when we talk about strategic and intensive interventions are those students who are in the red or the yellow based on their STAR math or STAR reading or STAR early literacy assessment. And so those students are students who are scoring below the 20th percentile. And our new Aries Analytics system allows our MTSS teams to really easily identify and then disaggregate that data to be able to determine what types of tier two and tier three interventions would be appropriate for those students. So we have a couple of examples here of our evidence-based interventions that we have in place, that we resource and that we have staff available for at our schools. So small group intervention is an evidence-based intervention that we are using at both the the elementary and secondary level. At the elementary level, we have interventionists at each of our elementary sites who both push in and pull out of classrooms to work with students on a small group basis. And they're using, as Director Manning mentioned earlier, a new program that we adopted this year, which is the Benchmark Phonics Intervention Program. They're also using Bridges Intervention to provide math interventions. We also have as a tier two evidence-based intervention for students before and after school interventions, after school tutoring, homework club. At the secondary level, we have at most of the element, or most of the middle schools, we have flex intervention sessions during the day where students, it's flexible time during the bell schedule where students can get extra support on the classes that they may be struggling with and get extra support with their reading, extra support with their math. Now that we have Aries, the Aries Intervention tab in our Aries Student Information System, we're able to track these interventions and we're able to query and run data based on the students who are receiving and flagged as receiving those tier two academic interventions. We look forward at the end of the year to providing the board with data that meets that success indicator for the board priority about MTSS implementation that provides evidence of progress and growth for students who are receiving tier two academic interventions on STAR, evidence of growth on STAR math and STAR reading and STAR early literacy. In terms of training, coaching and technical assistance, we have our interventionist team receiving ongoing coaching and professional development. We have ongoing coaching for our MTSS teams from our Coordinator of Student Wellness's support. She works with them to disaggregate the data that is coming in through Aries Analytics to look at the STAR data and triage the students who need the most support. In addition, we provide training and technical assistance along with Dr. Abud and the Data and Assessment Team to all of our sites with Aries Intervention documentation and also Aries Analytics. And I will toss it back to Dr. Abud for the remainder of the presentation, which is questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Knox. Yes, we'll open it up for questions and discussion at this point.
Before we get to that, Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, we do. Norma Ortiz, go ahead, please.
I appreciate, I appreciate the, the PowerPoint slide. There's a couple of things that come to mind to thought. Especially with the last presentation in terms of the data, I would like to know about the data that reflects how students, especially those that are highly impacted or in red with the, in connection or link with the previous PowerPoint slide that need intensive intervention support. So the data surrounding how many students, especially, well, I have a seventh grader. I would like to know at a secondary level how their, the numbers in terms of who is being, getting all that support and it is positively impacted. The need is still there for after school tutoring and supports for, especially in the area of English language development. So I would like to know how much of this support is given or allocated at a secondary level for all of our students in general, especially those that are highly impacted and that are continuously struggling and falling behind. So it would be nice to have that type of data and kind of make that comparison. Thank you.
Ortiz. Any board comments this evening?
Yes. Oh, we do have.
A comment?
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
El Gregor, go ahead, please.
Hi there. Hold on, we've got to just make sure things are right over here. So I'd just like to point out that it's nine o'clock and I have no idea what agenda item we're on because all of this stuff, while pertinent to many people, it's not pertinent to the majority of people who are calling in to try to speak. That's all.
Excuse me. Comment is not pertinent to the discussion issue? Are there any more public comments, Mr. Michaels?
Yes, we do have one more. Sylvia Regalotto, Zach Lott, go ahead, please.
Is this pertinent to the, to the STAR assessment, ma'am?
Yes, it is. Thank you so much. Once again, I just have a question with regards to the data points. And if it's possible to at some point see the breakdown by school or by even just the overall, I know a lot of attention has been paid in the past and currently to a lot of the interventional sectors of the population that needs the help. But I would also love to see the data on those students who are in the more accelerated part of performance on all of the tests and how and what programs are available to them to continue fostering their growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Michaels, do we have any additional public comment?
There's no more public comment for the second.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, Trustee Chu, please continue.
So I just have to say, I love the idea of the growth by assessment, the SGP, because I think teachers can really use that to intervene when it's needed and they can get that information fast through Aries Analytics. I shared in my report that I was able to see it in action at a meeting for parents. So really grateful for the integration of the STAR data into Aries Analytics. So really grateful for the integration of the star data into Aries analytics. Related to the growth by assessment, and I think this is what Ms. Regalado Zach Laud was. Kind of alluding to is for the growth by assessment. We know that about two thirds of the students had typical or high growth. If we broke that down by the four categories. So the four categories being at or above benchmark, on watch intervention and urgent intervention. And the fall, if we use that as the baseline, do we see any differences in the percentage of those growth categories? So we know that two thirds are in typical high growth and low growth is about a third for all of our students. What if we disaggregated that data?
Yes, thank you for that question. So and thank you for asking that earlier this week so we could look more closely into that. So what we see is that for the most part, regardless of what performance level the students were at in the fall, we do still see about that two third split with students. Making typical or high growth and about a third making the low growth. So there's a, you know, a slight discrepancy of a couple of percentage points here and there. But for the most part, we do see that consistent two thirds of students making the typical and high growth.
So our growth in the different categories are pretty similar.
They're, yes, very similar. That's correct.
And I know that parents don't receive the SGP data. Is there any plans to share that? I know that we see those. Those scale scores and the percentiles, but what about the SGP?
Yeah, great question. So that is not currently in any of the reports and we don't currently have plans to share that. Parents are used to a certain group of data points and so we'll continue to provide that to them. But, but at this time where we don't have any plans to share the SGP quite yet, but that is something we could look at for the future.
Great. And I was struck by the difference in national and state benchmarks. Is there a reason why we choose to use one over the other? And when would we? Actually look at the state benchmarks because the next time they're assessed, they're going to be also taking, well, actually, some, some students are about to take the CAFS test. So I think it would be useful to understand how their students might perform on there. So what are your thoughts about using the state benchmarks rather than the national benchmarks, I guess?
Yes, thank you. That's a, that's a really great question. So the two benchmark types have different purposes. So the national benchmark is really designed to group students into those four categories. That allows for classroom teachers to differentiate for different, different groups to. Design interventions for particular groups of students. And so Renaissance has, has done their analysis of the data so that they can. Put students into those four groups. So as far as the day-to-day work the teachers do in the classroom and planning for day-to-day instruction and. End of your goals, then those benchmarks are really, are really the best way to, to look at the students. The state benchmarks are really designed to predict that CAFS performance as you alluded to earlier. So a principal may want to look at that to see, are my students on track to doing well in May at the CAFS? So we don't. You know, we don't, we don't want teachers or administrators to wait until the end of the year to get that data. So those state benchmarks allow anyone who's interested in that data to look at it throughout the year and see where kids are at. So it really depends on the purpose, but both benchmarks are valuable and can come in handy depending on the situation or the conversation that's being had.
Great. And my last question is about our DLI students. How are we assessing those students? I know that there is a star Spanish test. But, you know, in, I think it was in the lower grades, they're not quite learning English in the same way as. The, the regular schools. So how are we assessing those kids?
Yeah, great question. So for the, so we do use the star test in Spanish depending on the grade level of the schools. So at the Napa Valley Language Academy and Pueblo Vista, their K two students. Will take the star early literacy test in Spanish because that is primarily how they're receiving instruction. And then as students get to third grade, they'll take the tests in English. And then they, they'll take the, the star reading test in English. And then both elementary schools do give the star math test in Spanish and then Harvest Middle School does give the star. Reading test in Spanish to their DLI students. So there, so that test is given across. Is given at the different school sites that are in the DLI program. Additionally, the. Elementary schools, Napa Valley Language Academy and Pueblo Vista use an assessment called EDAL. Which is a phonics assessment designed specifically for the Spanish language. So they use that at the early grade levels. To determine if kids are learning their sounds properly because they are different in English and Spanish. So. Between the star assessments and dibbles, the, the DLI schools end up with, with a lot of data. But I think you illuminate a really good point for us as a system as we are looking towards expanding the DLI program with UNIDOS and. Really being thoughtful about what are those assessments now that we're going to use across the K-12. DLI program. And so I'm sure that's something that Director Ready and I can, can discuss and talk about as we, as we continue to grow that program and prepare for next year and the years after that.
Great. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Trustee Gracia.
Sure. So let's start off with the good news. I'm encouraged by the progress made by our kindergartner classes on the star early literacy test. This was one of the bright points here. It was an almost 20% increase. Star reading in three through five also at least shows some growth. So that's good. Not nearly as high, of course, as the kindergarten class, but still some growth, which is nice to see. Unfortunately, middle school. Remains entirely stagnant as does high school. Math proficiency growing in elementary, which is good. Slightly improving in middle and but not moving at all at the high school level. So some work to do certainly still there. Star reading categories are showing a disturbing trend though. Between 33% and 45% of our students need intervention or urgent intervention. As we learned last time, this continues to be too many students to practically serve with our interventions. So. We're really going to have to do something to bring those numbers down so we can then target the students that really need our help. Star math indicates that we're really struggling with students as they move to sixth grade. Which indicates that our board annual priority number three, which focuses the district's attention on improving our transition years. Is really important and the right place to be spending our time. But I'm really concerned about the subgroups that we saw tonight. Particularly the severe underperformance of our English language learners in all categories. The scores for our English language learners are just not good enough. What can we do to help close that gap?
That's a question, right, trustee Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Manning or Ms. Ready, would you like to take it at your various levels?
Yeah, I can start with secondary. So one of the areas that we're focusing on in our, our work with math this year is identifying key vocabulary. Within our priority standards and proficiency skills that we can support our students with. We know that math is a form of a language. And so we're identifying those currently to help support our students. I think additionally, providing them additional sport with support within the classroom and through our after school intervention regarding tutoring. There are various models throughout our district, but continuing to look at that and provide that targeted support because we know that it's a language for math, but it's also a language for them within the class.
And at the elementary level, we're continuing to focus on strengthening our designated ELD instruction, which is the time. During the day when students are getting their, their needs met at their direct level. Around English language development, but also recognizing that students need to have their English learner needs addressed throughout the day. And we're focusing very closely on student discourse and ensuring that when students are engaged. In classroom conversations that are academic, academically focused classroom conversations, that there are adequate scaffolds. And supports in place for those students. So principals are out coaching, supporting and observing for that. And we've tied that into our, the math board priority so that we're leveraging. Number corner as an opportunity to really develop rich language for our students. As again, just focusing not just on the English language development block during the day. But those needs that are met that are being, are showing up for our students throughout the day. We're also engaging in those discussions with our West Ed team. Building a really strong master plan for English learners that will carry us into next year. Recognizing that this is definitely an area of need.
I think one more thing in secondary, as we look at the learning sprints, part of the target within those, it's all students that we're looking at the data within the classroom. To adjust instruction. Many of those sprints, our teams, our principals and our teachers are looking specifically at the multilingual learner data within the classes. To provide more targeted support as they implement those sprints.
Okay. Trustee Gonzalez Maris.
I think just on trustee Gracia's note, in, in terms of our DLI students or our English language learner students. One slide that I'm particularly excited to see connected to the star assessment was the implication for interventions and MTSS. Cause I think it's a combination of a lot of the households of, of where these kids live. There's just. A myriad of other issues that are, that impact. Their, their ability to focus and participate in the classroom. So. I look forward to that, that, what is that connection? Because I think what we see here in front of us is quality data, which. I'm, that's as we run through the slides and what we've seen in our previous. Presentations is just, I see quality data and that is just so important for us because. As board members, we can then look at our priorities, a lot of it aligns with our current goals, but then really focus on allocation of our resources. And where it needs to go. And so that's, and working hard to not jeopardize where we need to allocate those resources because. We can't do it without the, the, the funding to do all of this program work. So you know, that's it. It's more a comment because I know. We'll have an update on that. And, and I think what that's going to do, it's just going to allow us to even see what is the ability that we have to be creative. And what's, what are some innovative ideas that we can do that are. Reflective of our school district and our community because there's just so much that the system is there, but. There's more to be done in order to, to really fill in those, those bits and pieces that can really support our students and. And get their math scores up and they're, you know, it's, it's just, it's so much more complicated, but. I'm really glad to see for the first time and maybe was presented like this before, but it just right now it just feels so connected. To see the star assessments and then to, to include the, the intervention and MTSS data. So. Looking forward to continuing to see more, more growth.
Trustee Riser.
Yeah, I, I just. I really agree with what trustee Gonzalez Morris said about the, just the strategic pairing of the implications of MTSS with this data. And also I'm very appreciative to have these data points and I think it's so impactful now that we have the fall to winter to really look at. And, and I think, given all of the challenging factors that all of our educators are dealing with and all of our students are dealing with. I think it's really impressive that we have an average of 65% of our students across the board showing. Typical or high growth. That's really to be celebrated. And I, and I also would say, I, I, I think everyone here and including the team that presented is aware of the areas of concern. And so that. It's not going to be an immediate process that all of this strategic foundational work that we're doing with MTSS and Aries analytics and the targeted instruction and. All of the things that proficiency standards and the assessment linking to those, all of that really strategic work is not going to be. An immediate, you know, one, one trimester turnaround. So I'm very heartened to see that despite the fact that some of the data is concerning, in particular that at the, you know, we've raised the English learners and the subgroup data. And then also what, what feels, what the data says is, is, you know, sort of. Some stagnation in the data for secondary is concerning. But that's also, everyone is aware of that and every, and the instructional team is being incredibly strategic and purposeful in, in every possible way to get the very, very most. Out of those resources that we have. And I guess my, the only thing that I would say is would be a wish for the future would be that we might be able to have funding to up the. Sort of teaching adult to student ratio at the secondary for intervention. We don't have interventionists at the secondary level. I did inquire about that and there are, I wasn't aware that there's one-on-one tutoring available for any student. So there really are, I was heartened to see there are one-on-one interventions and academic supports available at secondary, but my hope. For the future is that we would be able to build into those tier two and tier three interventions for secondary. Some, some more targeted small group support. But this represents a great deal of thoughtful and intelligent. Approaches to our challenges here and keep up the good work because we're moving in the right direction.
Thank you, trustee Riser. I'd like to acknowledge trustee Gracia's dogged commitment. To improving achievement on behalf of our students as well as trustee choose clarifying questions and. Trustee Riser and trustee Gonzalez Morris' support for the process and this is a process. We are all focused on the same path ahead and I think this is the hard work that we have all been talking about and looking forward to. Thank you to Dr. Booth and the directors Manning, Ready and Knox. The board is looking forward to the statistical improvement as well as the individual achievement progress for each and every student. We appreciate all the hard work. Okay, moving on to instructional services. Oh, pardon me, we're going to take a brief break. We will be back in five minutes. Thank you so much for your patience. Okay, thank you very much. Welcome back. We are moving on to J3A Napa Valley Unified School District Middle School redesign update. Napa Valley Unified School District is in the process of redesigning middle school programming in alignment with Board Annual Priority Number One. Focused on improving the middle school student and family experience. The mission and programming for the NVUSD middle schools are aligned to the NVUSD strategic plan goal number one as stated. Focused on students experiencing responsive, engaging pedagogy and thriving socially. Emotionally and academically. The presentation will provide an update on the current state of the design process, middle school programming and transitional support for the 2022-23 school year.
Thank you, trustee Jankowitz. Before I toss to director ready, I just wanted to give. A huge thank you to the team that's presenting tonight and specifically to director ready for leading these this amazing work. So. Thank you so much and take it away, Director Ready.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings. Mr. Michaels, could you share the slides, please? So, good evening and thank you for the opportunity to share our current progress with middle school redesign. It's an exciting time at the middle level. Next slide, please.
Director Ready, just one moment, please. Sorry, we're having a bit of a technical issue here. Just one moment, please. Director Ready, profuse apologies. I'm sorry, we had a a brief technological issue here. Please proceed.
Thank you, no problem. So we'll give a brief overview in the fall we shared about the vision and design process with students, staff and families. Tonight, we'll review how taking time to build that strong foundation. Of a consistent vision and guiding principles are now allowing us to build the structures and systems a semester. As well as design for belonging as we transition students, staff and families across our middle schools. The middle school redesign work is allowing us to strengthen our college and career readiness by setting middle school as a time of exploration and discovery. And continuing to lay a strong academic foundation in preparation for high school. The focus on middle school programming allows us to strengthen our responsiveness and develop engaging pedagogy with students. And most importantly, to the middle school transition. Is a focus on supporting students as they develop socially, emotionally and academically during the middle years. A very important developmental stage and transition in our youth lives. Next slide, please. One more, Mr. Michaels. Thank you. As a team, we continue to ground our goals and design on the board annual priority number one. The ongoing work focused on improving the middle school experience for our students and families. Tonight, you'll hear more about the articulation of consistent course offerings, services and programs across the three campuses. And the development of Onido's middle school programming. Next slide, please. During the spring semester, we're leveraging our vision, guiding principles and success indicators to guide the transitional phase. And build the structures to support a strong implementation in 2022, 2023. Next slide, please. Our vision was drafted in August of 2021 with a team of students, staff and families with input from site leadership teams and families. The feedback collected was used by the redesign team to edit and finalize a current vision and guiding principles that we present this evening. The vision of Napa Valley Unified School District Middle Schools is to provide an inclusive, equitable, responsive, restorative and rigorous education. Where students have a sense of belonging. Students are encouraged to discover who they are and learn to advocate and contribute within a high quality educational environment. I would like to introduce you to one of the middle school students who has been involved in the middle school redesign process. He is going to share the meaning of the vision through his eyes. Mr. Michaels, could you share the video?
Hi, my name is Pedro Cardenas. I am from SMS in a. Middle school and this is what the vision means to me. The vision of MBUSD middle schools means that we have a school where. We are included and we include others. Our schools respond to students and need. When we, when something goes wrong in our school community, we work together to make it right. We want our. Students to learn and continue to grow in their education. We want students to belong here. Students. Can share and discuss their needs and contribute to make a really great school.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. Next slide, please. The middle school redesign work is a project with our community of staff, students, families and partners. Tonight, I'm grateful to have a team of leaders with us to share and videos of our students involved in the work. We thought at best they have a reasonable bedtime tonight. Next slide, please. Guiding principle number one that was developed by the team was we grow and evolve in response to the changing needs of our community. Next slide, please. Our current progress in bringing this guiding principle to life in our middle school redesign is is as follows. Students, staff and families developed a common vision and guiding principles that you see tonight. We've aligned a middle school open enrollment process to support our families in this transition. As we face the challenges of COVID, we're grateful for our collaborative process that has produced a successful open enrollment period for our students, families and staff. In response to community interest of small schools and strengthening the dual language immersion pathway. We are developing two new models for middle school. Onido's middle school, which is fully enrolled and representative of the overall district. And two K eights, a continuation of Shear and the development of Brown's Valley, which you will hear more about this evening from their incredibly proud principals. Next slide, please. Currently, we are designing for belonging with a focus on our students, staff and families. Students and families have received their enrollment of choice at each middle school. Principals welcome students with an opening letter. And middle school teams are visiting campuses to register students. This started with special attention to Harvest and River students as they transition to new sites. Or receive new programming at their current site. Over the next months, the design team has planned events to support belonging. Our staff is transitioning as well, and we are intentionally designing for belonging amongst our staff. Thank you to the partnership with our collective bargaining unit. Each middle school site is hosting staff socials. This is an opportunity for our staff to come together to connect with colleagues and visit sites that they may not have seen. Site leaders are coming together to design structures and systems currently. HMS and River staff are joining Redwood Middle School and Silverado Middle School to design common bell schedules. As staff learn where they will teach next year, we have planned for afternoons where staff can meet their new teams and learn about their new sites with the goal of growing relationships early, often and ongoing. We know that teams in middle school are important for staff as well as students. As we design for belonging, this evening, we have a Harvest Middle School student to share who has been involved in this process to bring belonging to students as a transition across the system. Mr. Michaels, could you share this video?
Hi, my name is Sophia Laram, student Harvest Middle School, and I'm going to be transitioning to the new school. One of the main focuses of the middle school redesign was to make students and teachers feel comfortable at our new school. We tried to cater to different perspectives and come up with ideas that would help everyone feel at home in our new school. And it was a great experience being part of it. Thank you for the opportunity.
Next slide, please. We also know that building community with our families is important. On Tuesday evening, Dr. Mercedes hosted an evening with PTOs, site council and ELAC families to share our current progress and gather feedback. We are grateful for their insights and will follow up with this parent group in the coming weeks as we start to plan for transitioning our families to their new sites. And with that, I'm excited to announce and hand it over to Principal Arribe to talk more about Onido's middle school.
Good evening. Next slide, please. So we went hard at work building our amazing program at Onido's middle school, and I am proud to announce. That we are at full capacity with an enrollment of 624 students while also holding a waitlist. Since summer 2021 up to now, we have been hard at work. With different committees. Through these separate committees involving staff, parents and and students. We have developed our school's mission and vision, our school's name. And recently, we completed the branding process where we chose our logo, our colors and our mascot. You can see our logo on the screen. And you can also see that Onido's will be the future home of the Otters or Las Nutrias en Español. Along with other middle schools, we are in the midst of building the master schedule as we enroll our students in various courses. We are also continuing to develop both of our language pathways in the cultural arts integration program. Where students will experience art lessons as a way to express and reflect on their understanding. And thinking on different subject matter. Next slide, please. So we are using this school year and maximizing our time to develop this unique program at Onido's. And we have some next steps that we are planning and and working on. In the next few months, the goal is to launch our own student council or in our parent leadership groups such as site council and ELAC. I believe this will be instrumental in helping us transition successfully in August. We also need to work on our staffing with HR as we identify the unique courses that we will be offering and the staffing needs. To to offer those courses successfully. In addition, we will continue to develop the language pathways and the cultural arts integration units. So having said that, we will need to plan for professional development so that we hit the ground running with the staff in August of 2022. And last but not least, the courses that we are going to offer at Onido's during the school day will be will all be four classes. And in order to support students. Who want to continue to take performing art classes such as band and choir. We are also working on building an after-school program to support those students. As you can see, we've done a lot of work and there's more work that lies ahead of us. But it's exciting to see it all come together in a very graceful manner. And with that, I'm going to toss to Principal Brian Gardner, who's going to talk to us about his K eight program.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to share the progress of both Browns Valley and Shear and becoming. Our new TK eight schools. Currently, we have one sixth grade class at Shear. And in 2223, there will be two additional sixth grade classes at both Browns Valley and Shear and our additional seventh grade class. Of our rising sixth graders from this year. Next slide, please. Shear and Browns Valley began working closely together last school year, and we've had several planning sessions this year. And we met with parents last year to gather their interests and begin developing a vision for the program. This year, we're also engaging our current sixth graders, learning more about their interests and what they would like to see be part of our program next year. Our focus at the moment at Shear Elementary School this year has been centered around leadership and community service for our sixth graders. Additionally, we're meeting. Additionally, we're meeting with our current fifth-grade and sixth-grade families around developing a vision of the ideal graduate and to further refine our overall vision and sharing the design of the programs. It will help us guide in building a strong foundation that will be a result of collaboration and community building. We're also working to align our curriculum to the other MBUSD middle schools to build a program that's engaging, rigorous, and focused on both academic and personal growth. And thank you for the opportunity to share this evening, and now I'll toss over to Assistant Principal Peter Hartnack.
Thank you very much, Principal Gardner. I'll be talking tonight about Guiding Principle number two, which is to provide equal opportunities for all students to access programs, services, and experience aligned with a TK through 12 continuum. Next slide, please. Guiding Principle number two in action. So in community, Principal Uribe and I will be talking about this slide together as I will be discussing the first bullet point around smaller learning communities and program articulation within our comprehensive middle schools. And Principal Uribe will be discussing the Unidos Middle School Cultural Arts Integration and Spanish Pathways. One of the things that's really important around the middle school redesign is having smaller learning communities. When you have larger schools, it's critically important to make schools within a school so that students know where their home base is and who are the people that are supporting them. These are all excellent opportunities for, for students to make relationships with teachers and also for the teachers to embed social and emotional learning opportunities. The design is that students are grouped within a cohort of four core teachers, English, math, social studies, and science, and they are with those teachers for the whole year, and they share those teachers with their 168 cohorts. That allows the teachers to have an opportunity to discuss what students need on a social and emotional level and deal with MTSS or multi-tiered systems support issues around attendance or academic concerns. There's also opportunities for program articulation around professional learning communities, which is the idea that academic groups come together in English, social studies, math, and science to discuss how we approach these subjects with our students in the most effective ways. And so these are the, the models that we have for allowing students and teachers to create models that are a school within a school, to create smaller schools within a larger school. While Unidos is the most new, is the newest school, we are all united in this work. And as we do this, as we do this work together, it's critically important to understand that we are all collectively engaging in all of the work of this change. And I will toss briefly to Principal Uribe.
That's unclear. So as mentioned earlier, the courses that we are going to offer at Unidos during the school day will all be core, core classes. And in order to provide an elective type field to our students, we will integrate cultural arts into the curriculum, which presents great opportunities for our students to experience different art modalities throughout the school year. And what's really exciting is that we will have high levels of collaboration amongst our teachers as they develop the units of study and think outside of the box on how to embed art into their curriculum so that they're demonstrating their understanding through an art lesson in a science class, in a math class, in their social studies class. So that'll be a really exciting opportunity for our students. In terms of our Spanish pathway, every student at Unidos will be learning Spanish based on their level. Because of this, we are developing three different language pathways to address the language needs in our school. One of the pathways is the DLI pathway, since we will be receiving Pueblo Vista and NBLA students who will continue to deepen their Spanish language development at Unidos. We will also offer Spanish, introduction to Spanish for students who are completely new to learning the language. And then our third language pathway will be Spanish for Spanish speakers. And this is for the student who comes from a bilingual home but has not had formal instruction in Spanish. So they will have opportunities to, you know, practice reading, practice writing in Spanish, learning grammar rules, and that sort of thing. So these are the great opportunities that we're working and building for Unidos, and I'll toss back to Peter Hartnack.
Thank you very much. Next slide, please. So we have approached the, the building of our master schedules, our bell schedules, and the articulation of programs between middle schools and high schools in a very collaborative and system approach led by Director Monica Ready. This has been a divide and conquer approach utilizing the, the strengths of all of the people in our middle school administration. We are following the placement matrix provided by the school district to make sure that we're putting students in appropriate classes based on their, their test scores and teacher recommendations. We are also engaging in person with all of the incoming students, both at the fifth grade, coming into sixth grade, and also coming from Harvest Middle School and River Middle School. We have currently engaged with all the students coming from Harvest and River, and we will be engaging with the students coming from the fifth grade right after the high schools register their students in middle school, which is coming up on the week of the 14th through the 18th. We also have been engaging in making sure that our bell schedules are very much aligned. We, we want to make sure that we're doing this in a, in a fashion that follows our human resources approach of interest-based problem solving. We want to make sure that we have a number of things in place. We want to make sure that we have time for flexible learning, for students to make up homework, to get help that they need, to engage in a number of activities that are, that are interventions for their learning for English, math, social studies, and science. We also are critically interested in making sure that students have an articulation between what they're doing in middle school and what they're going to see in high school, and they see that very direct connection. Next slide, please. So program articulation talks about equal opportunity for students. We want all students in the Napa Valley Unified School District to have equal opportunity to arts electives and different kinds of educational experiences that are beyond the core subjects of science, social studies, math, and English. One of the most important things is having the connections between the middle school and the high school. So we have a number of electives that, that do create that bridge between the middle school and the high school. Band, strings, which is orchestra, choir, the courses of avid and, and arts. These are all classes that we offer at the comprehensive middle schools that will be offered at the high schools so that these programs can grow and students can have these opportunities throughout their educational experience to enrich their lives through music, art, and other performing activities. Next slide, please. When we talk about you need us middle school, we want to really make it clear what the paths are for all of our students who are coming to this new and unique school. There are three different paths that students will be able to engage in when coming to the school. If the students are from a dual-language immersion school, which is currently Napa Valley Language Academy and Pueblo Vista, they will engage as an elective in Spanish language arts at the sixth, seventh, and eighth level. If they're coming to the school and they do not have dual-language immersion experience, they're, they then have two different paths they can take. If they are a native speaker of Spanish, they will take Spanish for heritage speakers for, for the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. If they are native English speakers, they will take Spanish one, two, and three for the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. This leads all students to being in a position where they're able to take either Spanish for their freshman year or advanced placement Spanish for. Additionally, there is a class for Spanish for heritage speakers, for Spanish that is level four as well. This allows students to do a number of things. One is to, to get their seal of biliteracy, which means that they need to pass the AP Spanish test with three, with a score of three or above, and they need to have a 2.0 above with their ELA GPA as well as a CAST at standard or above. And our students do a very wonderful job with this. And this also allows them to, in the, in the later part of their high school career, take additional elective such as arts and performing arts and career technical education because they have already demonstrated that they are bilingual. Next slide, please. I'm now going to pass it to Assistant Principal Bobby Ruth from American Canyon Middle School.
Thanks, Peter. So my name is Bobby Ruth. I'm an assistant principal at American Canyon Middle School, and I'm honored to present to you guys tonight. Thank you for having me. It is very important for MBUSD to support all students. The guiding principle number three, we want all students to be given opportunities, chances, and tools to reach their full and unique personal potential. The social-emotional well-being is very important to MBUSD. We understand that academics is only a small part of our students' lives, so we strive to teach the whole child, and that is shown by our unified efforts to embed protocols and structures within our system to support that goal. And you'll see these coming up. Next slide, please. Social-emotional learning, SEL, second step curriculum embedded in our school day support for all students. Our MTSS teams are district-wide. We meet regularly. We calibrate regularly. We communicate regularly, and we provide SEL, personal, professional development, as well as second step curriculum, which supports all staff and students' health, not only academically, but behaviorally, mentally, and personally. Next slide, please. The advisory slash homeroom is used for building our communities. Flex time is utilized to support all students and their needs, and PLCs use student data to drive instruction and next steps so that we can help our students in all aspects. MBUSD has worked tirelessly to standardize several structures that are conducive to promoting SEL, a positive school environment, and the importance of staff and student relationships. We want to really drive it home that we do care about our students, and we do this for our students. And we want to make sure that all of our students understand that we hear them, we acknowledge them, we understand them, and that we're here to support them in any way that we can possible. Next slide, please. Director Ready, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Ruth. So Guiding Principle number four is on the horizon. Our students really shared during our design work that grading and assessment was critically important to their identity and their sense of self-worth. So this principle is particularly for our students. We value equitable grading and assessment practices over traditional methods of evaluation that support our diverse community of learners. Next slide, please. So on the horizon, our middle school leadership teams during the 2223 school year, we come together with this new project with the support of Crescendo Education to look at our grading and assessment practices at the middle school level. Next slide, please. And it wouldn't be middle school without play. Guiding Principle number five, we value flexible, joyful learning that prioritizes non-academic skill development to leverage learning and relationships. There are many ways that we do this at the middle school level, but tonight I'll share one new, new way we are going to offer the joy of play at the middle school level. Next slide, please. So in the 2223 school year, all MBUSD middle schools will have MBUSD athletics. The sixth-grade level will have two sports, and at the seventh grade, seventh and eighth grade level, we will have seven sports. Schools will play against each other within the district as a part of this new middle school athletic program that we're excited to bring to our middle schools and hopefully give students an earlier opportunity and increase their participation as they move into high school by providing a stronger foundation with our athletic programming. And with that, I will toss it over to Principal Cole for Guiding Principle number six.
Good evening, everybody. It's my pleasure to present Guiding Principle number six, which is we invite and integrate marginalized voices to center their needs and perspectives. You've heard a lot about how this has really come to be, right? So all of the aspects of the work that my fellow colleagues have so eloquently described this evening have all the way through this process really centered and provided space for diverse perspectives to come together to make this work happen and to put together the cohesive plan that in part we're presenting today because the work is still ongoing, right? So throughout this process, it's been very important to come together as a community and really listen to one another. We've been very mindful every step of the way to create spaces where parents, students, and staff can come together and share what's important from their unique perspective. We have learned from one another and have used these diverse interests to further align our middle school program. At this time, I think it's time to hear another youth voice because we all smile when they come on because they're so passionate about the work alongside of us. So it's my pleasure to introduce to you June Kelly, a seventh-grade student who has been part of the middle school redesign process from the very first meeting. So, Mr. Michaels, if you'll play that video for us.
Hi, everybody. My name is June Kelly. I'm a seventh-grade student here at Silverado Middle School. And it's been wonderful that I'm on this board of teachers, students, admin, and all of the above, working on the middle school design project. One of our main focuses has been design for belonging. Design for belonging means that we're talking about all these new students coming from River, Harvest, and other schools to our school and Redwood. One of our main focus was to talk about how these students will feel like this school is now their home because it's going to be hard for a lot of students to transition from this one school and then go to a completely new school and possibly some of their friends won't be going there and kind of stuff like that. Another thing that we've been wonderful to have is students on the board because student voices are really powerful, and you can hear from the student's perspective about what's going on in our schools, district, everything, and what we need to work on and a lot of other things. So that has been my wonderful journey with the middle school design committee. I've been here for six months now, and I'm very excited for what the future holds for us.
Thank you so much. It's, it's so important to hear lens of the student, how they interpret the work. You heard Pedro and Sophia earlier, and throughout this process, they've really taught us a lot. And including today, as, as Director Ready was putting these videos together, we were still continuing to listen and learn from our students. It's been really important to also bring really together our parents and to have parents from across all of the middle schools and including some of our parents of fifth-grade students who will help us sort of craft some of the work from our new school, Unidos. And so it's been important to listen and learn from those staff, from our students, and from our families. Some highlights from our journey this, this school year have been working with the design team coming together to craft that vision, to really do that as a, as a whole group. And then separately, hosting webinars for our own parents so that we can start to share our vision for our schools as it sits underneath the umbrella of MBUSD, hosting school tours so that we can start to have people boots on the ground. What do our schools look like? And we'll start to do that as the spring progresses here. Thank you for advancing the slide and working to create new and exciting middle schools. As you heard, Principal Uribe and also Peter Hartnack described earlier, all of the intensive work that's done really to create the program that will become Unidos and working with the stakeholders of that community. So thank you for the opportunity for all of us, on behalf of all of us, for presenting tonight. At this time, we're here to take any questions that you might have, and from all of us, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Principal Cole. Before we, I ask for comments from the board. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, we do. First speaker is Karina.
Yes, we do. First speaker is Karina Servente. Go ahead, please.
Good evening. Thank you, Superintendent, trustees, and staff. Great presentation. I am very excited about all the findings and this update for our middle schools. I'm a parent of a seventh grader at American Canyon Middle School, and I'm particularly really interested in having a follow-up and more in-depth explanation on how the after-school programming for school athletics at the middle school is going to be implemented. Specifically, I'm sure the trustees and are you able to hear me?
Yeah, we are.
Sorry. I'm sure the trustees and, and and most of the people there on this call know that American Canyon has a very particular way that is not done in Napa, and that our after-school programming for our middle schoolers is provided by the city of American Canyon. In fact, the, we are the only school that has to share a gym with the city of American Canyon. All the other middle schools have two gyms. They're used solely by the middle schools. So we get this predicament of having to share one gym for a thousand kids. And so I'm, I'm wondering how it's, how this is going to work out, especially since my, my son will be in eighth grade next year, and you're saying there is going to be seven sports provided for seventh and eighth graders. So it's just, I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little concerned about how the whole thing is going to play out. Having said all those, all that, all that information to you, I, I really would like a follow-up on this and a little bit more of what the plan will be for the, for that, and I just don't want our students to not have sports, because we didn't do follow-ups or, or we didn't do really good in-depth planning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Michaels, do we have any additional public comment?
Yes, we do. Next speaker, Sylvia Regalado Zachla. Go ahead, please.
Hi, good evening once again. I'm just going to dawn on two quick hats here. The first, I want to piggyback on Mrs. Servente and go back to my first comment that I made during the public comment section, which is, I think this is a really great presentation that you guys gave tonight. I'm excited. I've told many people that I run into, I'm a lifer, it seems like, here in the district, because I have a kindergartner. So I'm really vested, and I know a lot of families right now in American Canyon are really vested in ensuring that there's programmatic pieces in place by the time we get to middle school, and we are ready to roll up our sleeves and help. And so I think that sharing this with the elementary school population across the district would be key, because we know our communities. We know some of the programming that we'd like to be able to see, and we could also help to be allies in helping to ensure that all of these great programs that you guys are putting together can actually be implemented to the benefit of all students. The second hat that I wanted to dawn on really quickly is I participated in the very hard task of having to be part of the middle school task force that had to look at the hard data with declining enrollment and preservation of programming for the district when we decided to close down one of the middle school campuses. And we heard a lot of feedback from committee members that were interested in preserving programs and creating strong programs for students, and that was one of the guiding principles and one of the core beliefs that we had, as well as listening to the community and their desire to have really strong programming for students. And I just want to say that I'm really happy to see this presentation, because it honors that. It truly has, you know, ensured that quality programming is still on the forefront of the district, that you're trying to serve the needs of all of our students, families that were interested in the smaller school settings and programming that had really been key at some schools, but not across all schools. So I just want to say kudos for taking all of that feedback and really putting into place. And again, thank you so much, and please consider also, again, extending this out to the elementary school population, so that we can get feedback. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Michaels, do we have any additional public comment?
Yes, we do. The final speaker is Norma Ortiz. Go ahead, please.
Hi. Yes, just a suggest, well, some suggestions. I would like to see an in-person forum attended by all of our board members and open to each school site's community, the public as a whole, to advise about the redesign of middle schools at our different middle school sites like Silverado, American Canyon Middle School, Redwood, River, Harvest. Also, I would like to see a English language learner resource room that includes life skills in terms of like bilingual books throughout our different school sites. I also want to see how the, and know a little bit more as to how the design for belonging would look like and will unwind eventually. And then we, since we do have a, it's my understanding, there's a waitlist at, at least at Redwood, Redwood Middle School. It would be nice to see the inclusion, perhaps of another, adding more, more groups to our school, because a lot of our families out there would like to have our students enroll at Redwood Middle School. In addition, we have been very blessed with the ACE after-school programs at the different middle schools that are already in place and highly attended by our students in terms of the ACE athletics calendar. I know it's a fact, because I tried to get my daughter in the girls' volleyball sport, but there was a waitlist at her school site. So I also want to appreciate the school tour that was provided at Redwood Middle School this year for my daughter with a fun scavenger hunt activity prior to the start of the, of the school year, and it was greatly appreciated, but appreciated by my daughter and other students. And it also included a printout of the student schedule, so, and the welcoming and so forth. Yeah, I think that's not for now.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Michael, do we have any additional public comment?
There's no further public comment for this item.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Gracia?
Yeah. I just wanted to give our superintendent an opportunity to clarify about a waiting list at Redwood Middle School, just to set the record straight there.
Yeah, so what was stated, it was stated that there was a Redwood Middle School. Yeah, Mr. Ringwall, are you available?
Yes, I am. So Redwood, there, there is currently a waiting list, but at UNIDO, sir, is not.
Okay.
Correct. So I can, let me, I will double-check that with Chris, but we do have a waiting list, depending on grade levels at some of our middle schools. Let me double-check on that, and give me about two or three minutes.
But UNIDO is fully enrolled. Fully enrolled, yes.
Correct, correct. That is correct.
Thank you.
Through the transition, there were families that were sitting on waitlists, and there's been a lot of sort of movement, and we've been honoring enrollment requests. So there's been a lot of movement and transition.
In that case, then, I just have a quick comment while they work on that. I wanted to recognize that part of the vision statement for these middle school redesigns includes a commitment to rigorous education. Middle school rigor is very important, because it prepares our students for high school and the post-secondary world. And I'm excited to learn more about this aspect of the vision and how it will be implemented next year and beyond.
Thank you. I acknowledge the challenges that came with the redesign process, but in the same breath, I must acknowledge the opportunities. I look at what has been recognized, addressed, considered, implemented, and the exciting next steps. We have enriched the middle school experience through the expansion and addition of the following, and I think it deserves reiteration. Introduction of K-8 at Brown's Valley and Expansion at Chair, Gold Standard Dual Immersion Middle School, Program Alignment Across the Middle Schools, SEL, Flex Time Advisory, Small Learning Communities, and Teaming, Middle School Student Advisories, Curricular Alignment, and the addition of enrichment and extracurricular programs. We appreciate all the hard work on behalf of our middle school community, and we look forward to these continued updates.
I agree.
Thank you, Trustee Water.
And I'd like to, I'd like what Mr. Hartnack was, was saying about middle school being a bridge to high school, and which is, certainly you are alluding to that, because it is important. And I look forward to electives for all. I love the opportunity for Spanish at Napa High. I remember the seal of biliteracy was really prized. People loved seeing it on their diploma. And our assistant principal from American Canyon Middle Schools, you know, emphasized that, you know, we're, we're here to serve all students. And like Karina Servente, I am interested in sports. This is the 50th anniversary of Title IX, and that means when I, and I've said before that I'm very ancient, when I was in high school, I played church league basketball, because there was no girls', girls' basketball. And, and I think of when I was in high school. And so I'm not anti-sport at all, but I hope in middle school that it's used as an opportunity for students to find out what they're really interested in, what sports they really enjoy, that they have chances to, because this is a sports mad community, you know, I get that. But I'm not looking for, you know, I just hope we don't get, move into this extreme competition that, you know, occurs in some school districts. I want middle schoolers to use this time as, as an opportunity to explore and look at sports as an opportunity for fun and making friends and develop, developing healthy exercise habits.
I just think we should note that Trustee Water, on March 3, 2022, said that she is interested in sports. And it's on video recording.
Yes, and I follow basketball. I enjoy basketball. It's like the only sport I actually understand, because I played it, but you know, yeah. I'm a human being.
Trustee Riser?
I just wanted to add on to that and say, I'm just really excited that we're going to be offering the sports programs for all of our comprehensive middle schools. They just, those after-school experiences give such important opportunities for kids to make friends, to let their guard down a little bit. It's important for them to have opportunities to be with their friends and in structured environments, but that are less structured than an academic classroom situation. So I think that there are just going to be really tons of benefits, you know, social, emotional benefits, health benefits to that, and I just am excited that we're going to be able to offer that. And then the other thing I wanted to just call out was to thank the team for your continued commitment to amplifying and centering student voices. And I really loved the video clips embedded within that presentation, and it's just such an important reminder of how smart and articulate our students are at such young ages, and it's, and it just is refreshing to hear the way that they express their, their understanding of what we're working on, but in their own kid language. So thank you, and I hope we get to keep having that in our presentations. It's really meaningful.
So I really appreciate the redesign effort, because I have, although I have an eighth grader that's going to go to high school next year, I actually have a fourth grader who's looking forward to going to middle school. So looking forward in a year when he does go to see what kind of changes are being implemented as a parent. I do want to provide a little bit of input on what Assistant Principal Bobby Ruth had said about Second Step. It's actually in our schools now. And every week, we get weekly updates from our principal, Carliza Bataller. And embedded in there is basically a description of what our kids are going to learn using Second Step for that week, and gives us, parents, suggestions on how we can get connected to them as they're learning this curriculum, so that there's a family and school connection, connection right then and there through our students' work with Second Step at school. So I really appreciate that integration already. I don't think we're waiting for next year, and that is coming, it is here. And now here comes my heart questions, I guess. So both my kids were ALPS identified, and I had different experiences with the ALPS programs, because they're in different grade levels, and of course, the pandemic kind of threw a wrench in things on how, how the district can support ALPS students. From my experience with my eighth grader, they really didn't have any ALPS support in middle school. And I don't know if it's just at ACMS. My suspicion is it's not. But I kind of feel like if we're identifying these students in third grade, and they're starting to get support in fourth and fifth, why are we not continuing that support? And are we just wasting our resources in identifying them? So maybe, maybe I can, I guess, Director Ready maybe can, can answer that question.
Yeah, thank you. I think that it's important to identify all of our students, their current level, and continue to push them. And so with that, our ALPS students at the middle school level do have acceleration. But beyond that, I think one of the areas that was brought up tonight that we'll continue to dive into, that I know is being used, is around the flex time within the school day. And so that time is really to be responsive to student needs, and whether that student needs additional support or they need more challenge, that those opportunities are available and that they're targeted. And that's the importance of, I think, too, that small, creating those smaller learning communities where their core teachers do know their various levels and can continue to provide that targeted responsive support, no matter what their level is, whether it's being challenged or it's being supported. I'll see if there are any principals or assistant principals that want to speak more specifically to how that's addressed at their site.
It's okay. So I look forward to seeing what happens in middle school when my fourth grader, who was also ALPS identified, gets there. My experience with him has been a little different because of the pandemic. He was identified during the pandemic, when I know last year, the district had pilot-tested Rinzouli Learning. And this year, the first thing that he received was using the Rinzouli platform to do a learner profile. It was very enlightening. It really, it just confirmed the type of learner that he was. it just confirmed the type of learner that he was, why he was accelerating, the way he was accelerating. And I guess for me, it was reassuring I was doing the right thing. But, you know, I feel that with Rinzouli Learning Profiler or any other learner profiler would be highly valuable for all of our students, especially as we're looking at Aries Analytics, MTSS, how do we give interventions at the tier one level, especially? What, what kind of, I guess, what kind of resources are, is the district thinking about when it comes to these types of like ways, how do we individualize the learning for the students? Because I think it's important as we move forward in trying to, you know, making, make sure that they learn at the way that they learn.
And Trustee Chu, I thank you. I appreciate the questions or the inquiry around how we are addressing sort of ALPS, students who are identified ALPS in third grade and what happens to them during the middle school years and beyond. And that is an area that we continue to work on to provide support for those, those students in middle school. We've had options where they've had either some kind of acceleration, as Director Ready talked about in math, but it's, and then it's easy to sort of just I'm blanking on the word, but to distinguish like different levels in language arts. But in terms of like the enrichment that might come for an ALPS student, that is an area that we need to explore a little bit more in to support, provide that support the middle school years.
So I guess my, my comment about the Rinzouli learning is how, how do we get to more personalized instruction for our middle school kids if we have resources like Rinzouli Learner Profiler, or I believe Naviance is what's been used at the high school level. But I don't see anything in, in middle school. And I'm just curious if you're looking for something that kind of fills that gap in there?
We actually, we had Naviance in middle school for one year as a pilot and also in, in high school. It does have some sort of what you would call like learner profiles or, or career profiles in it. You know, that's not something that we have explored much around like individualized learner profiles for middle school. I don't know if Director Ready or Director Manning wants to add to that.
I think that when it comes to, oh, sorry, when it comes to, to middle school right now, one of the, one of the platforms we're able to use that pushes students at their level specifically in math is Dreambox. I know we're exploring that as well with Frekful. But I think that looking for resources during that, during the school day and maybe specifically during flex time for our students that are focused on that more one-on-one challenge is an area that we can look at as we get into the programming part. Right now, we're building the frame and the ball schedule, but as we move to the programming and really defining what that time looks like, we'll be looking at those resources. Not during the school year, but during the summer, we are going to continue to provide opportunities for students to have passion-based learning and that we're exploring those. We had some opportunities last summer. We're continuing to explore those with contracts to come at future board meetings for our students who are in the middle school as well as the high school. And then I'll hand it over to Director Manning to talk more about elementary.
Sure, thanks. Excuse me. I just wanted to sort of clarify the Rinzouli piece. So that is something that we can, we can explore as a tool for middle school as well. We, we piloted that last year in a few classrooms for, for our after-school program during the pandemic, during the hybrid learning phase. And this year, we rolled it out more fully in fourth and fifth grade and actually moved down into third grade once those students are identified as well. So teachers are finding that to be a very effective tool for differentiating instruction and it allows for, as you, as you mentioned, Trustee Chu, an element of personalized learning and independent learning on the part of students. So it is a tool that does, that, that's available for middle school age students. So it's something that we can, we can explore as an option for that more personalized learning to meet the needs of our ALPS learners.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Trustee Dooley, did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you. I, I really wanted to kind of lift up the, the work that is being done with UNIDOS and it's, it's great to see the, the, the school take shape and the branding is, is important to kind of develop the identity of school, but also seeing the pathways and, and the approach to the language, centering the, the language learning. It's, it's very exciting. It's something that, you know, we can look at and, and really know what the school is about, which, you know, we had a vision for it. That vision, you know, got developed more fully and were more, more, yeah, more fully than, than, you know, when we, we made the, the call on that. So I, I very much appreciate that. I am interested in seeing both how the kind of arts integration will, will work and seeing more detail about that as well as the after-school programs and, and the approach to extracurricular activities at that school. So it's, it's very well done and also looks like there's still a lot of good work to do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the present, Dr. Masetti.
I'm so sorry. Can I do?
Of course.
Just one statement really quickly. So just to confirm, we do, we've, we've checked with enrollment services. We do not currently to date, no waitlist at UNIDOS. Everyone's been enrolled, no waitlist at Silverado, and we do have a a waitlist at Redwood at particular grades. So that's the current enrollment landscape for the city of Napa Schools. I, I just want to thank the team and I, I want to thank the board really first and foremost, you know, all of this work is the phase two of middle school redesign. We have to remember that we had to go through the difficult process of school consolidation and closure in response to declining enrollment. And I'm really, really grateful. That was kind of part of our financial stabilization, but out of hard times come lots of opportunities. And so by the board setting this annual priority for this year, you can see the amount of progress that we've made since you laid that priority down in the summer. And the team has done an exceptional job despite all the madness we continue to deal, deal with throughout the year related to COVID to keep this focus, this laser-like focus. So I just, I really just want to illuminate kind of big picture that when a school board charges a superintendent and team to have laser-like focus and get particular things done in a school year, you know, that, that, that strategy can work. And I think we're seeing the evidence of that. I think we're really going to reap the benefits of it next year when we kick off the 22, 23 school year and all of these things are in place for implementation. Will there be refinement and improvement once we hit the ground with implementation? Absolutely. But the amount of work that we've done to create the structures and, you know, reprogram the middle schools after-school closure and consolidation, I think is, is pretty powerful and fills me with a lot of hope. And I, and I appreciate some of the commentary about thinking about, you know, our fourth and fifth graders who will be rising into the middle schools who will really sort of be in the, the thick of implementation as this work advances and moves forward and VUSD. So thank you to the instructional team and for all of the presenters, the site leaders. It's really been a group effort. So thank you.
Thank you. On that note, and thank you all. We will move to AG Completion Improvement Grant Program. The purpose of the AG Completion Improvement Grant is to increase the number of high school students graduating AG eligible, specifically unduplicated students, English learners, students who qualify for the federal free or reduced price meal program, and homeless foster youth. By meeting the AG requirements, students are eligible to apply to the University of California and California State University System. The AG Completion Improvement Grant allocation is based on an equal amount per unduplicated pupils enrolled in grades nine through 12 as reported in the CalPads or 2020, 2021 fiscal year fall one submission and are available for expenditure through 2025, 26 fiscal year. These funds are allocated to an LEA having an overall completion rate of less than 67%. And VUSD has an AG rate of 49.8% and qualifies for these funds. The AG Completion Improvement Grant presentation will provide the most current and relevant NVUSD A through G data and supports. Additionally, the presentation includes an overview of the funding parameters and allocation, budget development process, intended use of funds in alignment to NVUSD data and methods for progress, progress monitoring. The use of funds is aligned to NVUSD Strategic Plan Goal Number One, Student Learning Achievement and Access, and then Diversity Equity Inclusion Plan Goal Number Seven, Focused on Student Practices. We are ready.
Thank you, President Tinkwitz. I look forward to transitioning from middle schools to high schools. Mr. Michaels, could you please share the slides? So as you heard tonight, we'll share about A to G Completion Improvement Grant Funding and how we plan to allocate those funds to support our students at the high school level and increasing their A to G completion rates. Next slide, please. These funds will help us support NVUSD Strategic Plan Goal Number One, Increasing Students Graduating College and Career Ready, Providing Them With Responsive Engaging Pedagogy, as well as Helping Students Thrive Socially, Emotionally, and Academically. We know those are foundational to their success in their post-secondary life. Next slide, please. Tonight, we'll share about the A to G requirements and baseline data, the background and process, the backgrounds provided from the state and using these funds, and then the process and plan for how we've developed a budget and our progress monitoring that will occur over the next couple of years. Next slide, please. So the A to G requirements are the requirements that students need to meet to be able to apply to California State Universities and the University of California system. Our NVUSD Board Policy has the A to G requirements as a part of our graduation policy. The A to G requirements require that students complete two years of social science, four years of English, three years of math with a fourth year recommended, two years of a lab science with a third year recommended, two years of a world language with a third year recommended, one year of visual and performing arts, and one year of college preparatory electives. In order to meet these requirements, students must earn a C or higher in each of these courses. Next slide, please. Tonight, I'll share some baseline data that will help you understand how we are providing the allocation of funds to meet the greatest need when it comes to increasing A to G, A to G requirements for our students. In the class of 2021, the percentage of students who met A to G requirements upon graduation was 49.8%. Next slide, please. Currently, our class of 2022, there are 50.3% of our students are on track to meet A to G requirements upon graduation in June of 2022. Next slide, please. This allocation of fund is specifically to, to serve our unduplicated students. So our English learners, homeless and foster youth, and so, and students who are qualified socio-economically disadvantaged. You can see here that as we look at some of our larger subgroups within our district, that we have some areas of growth. Our English learners are achieving, are meeting the A to G requirements at 9%. Our homeless and foster youth are meeting them at 24%, and these are from the class of 2021. Our student, our migrant students are achieving this at 31.3%, 3% of our students with disabilities. And as you can see there, our last group is our students who would qualify for our free and reduced price lunch program hovering in the 30%. Next slide, please. Additionally, part of the grant targets students who, over the course of three semesters during the pandemic, earned grades of D, F, or no credit, as this would allow, not allow them to meet the A to G requirements. I'd like to note that in the spring of 2020, we implemented a board policy at the onset of the pandemic that would allow students to earn a grade of credit or no credit. So you can see at that particular window of grading that there is a lower DNF rate as a result of our support of students during this, during the pandemic. As we move into fall, we see, we shifted back into assigning letter grades. And so you can see that students, there was an increase in the number of Ds, Fs, and you can see a decrease in the number of no credits as that policy was no longer used. As we move into spring of 2021, the number of Ds, Fs, and no credits rose in that particular semester. Next slide, please. To provide context around these grades, as numerous grades are earned during these particular semesters, you can see the percentages of Ds, Fs, and no credits in comparison to the number of letter grades that are assigned over a semester. In the spring of 2020, again, because of our policy, only 2.7% of our students earned a DF or no credit grade. 13.3% of grades given were a DF or no credit in the fall of 2020, and 18.5% in the spring of 2021. Next slide, please. Currently, in order to support our students in meeting the A to G requirements, some of the support that we have is academic counseling. We increased our academic counseling support this year based on our unduplicated counts. We have students enrolled in advanced placement and dual enrollment courses in order to better prepare them for career and college readiness. We have embedded intervention and supports at the secondary level, as well as opportunities for students to recover their, their DF or no credit through credit recovery during the school year and during the summer. We have a scope and sequence ninth through 12th grade that our counselors push into classes to provide college and career readiness planning through the Naviance system. And as you heard earlier tonight, we have PSAT and SAT school day that we provide to all 11th grade students to allow them to take the college entrance exams that they need to apply to college. Next slide, please. So the A to G Completion Improvement Grant Funds are being allocated to the district in two areas, A to G access grants and A to G learning loss mitigation grants. Next slide, please. The allocation of funds is based on the California Educational Code 41590. The purpose is to increase the number of high school students graduating A through G eligible, particularly unduplicated students. The target audience is ninth through 12th grade students. And unduplicated students are defined once again as English learners, students who qualify for the federal free or reduced price lunch meal program and homeless foster youth. NVUSD is receiving a total allocation of close to $1.1 million. The allocation is based on an equal amount per unduplicated pupils enrolled in grades nine through 12 as reported in CalPads or the 2020, 2021 fiscal year fall one submission. The allocation to local education agencies is based on the overall completion rate of less than 67%, and it's available for expenditure occurrence through the 2025, 2026 fiscal year. Next slide, please. In drafting up our initial plan for the spending of these funds, we have met with students, staff, and families to gather information from our NVUSD leadership and high school leadership teams, our high school principals and counselors, credit recovery staff, students, superintendents, parents advisory, high school, and our DLAC leadership team. These groups provide a valuable insight into the needs of our students at this time. Next slide, please. The allocation of funds for the A to G Completion Improvement Grant are focused in, in five areas based off of the state. The first area is professional development. Secondly, advising and support, course expansion, access and partnership, advanced placement, and A to G completion in order to support students earning a C or higher. After gathering feedback and diving deeper into the data, we're, we have proposed to allocate the funds in this manner. As I looked deeper into the grade data for the class of 2022, one of the things to note before moving on to each of these focus areas is that students are having a, a more challenging time and an increased rate of Ds, Fs, and no credits in world history, US history, English language arts, and the third year of math. We feel like we're addressing the third year of math by providing a more diverse course offering in line with the University of California recommendations that will allow students to engage in relevant pedagogy at that third year of math. As I share out about our improvement plan, you'll hear more about the focus on reading and literacy. Next slide, please. In the area of professional development, as you heard earlier with our Star Reading Report and as well with the, the particular classes where we're noticing students are having a more challenging time meeting the A to G requirements, we're going to focus on reading and writing to learn. We have a strong foundation in NVUSD in Avid at the elementary, middle, and, and high school level, and we are going to lean into this to, to support students with reading and writing in all subject areas. Additionally, focusing on culturally responsive teaching and learning, we know that when students are more engaged with real and relevant pedagogy, that they will achieve at a higher level. And thirdly, we notice in our data And thirdly, we notice in our data a need to focus on our multilingual learners and the practices that we use to support their level of literacy and their achievement across all their A through G courses. We look forward to the completion of the WestEd work in May and the master plan that will help guide us, and we look to these funds to help support the implementation of those practices to support our multilingual learners. Next slide, please. Advising and support was a key area of interest from our families and our, and our staff. Providing more targeted transitional counseling and parent learning early in high school came up as a key area of focus. As students move from middle school to high school and the challenge and rigor of the courses increase, there is a need to provide additional counseling and parent learning at these key transition points. Additionally, providing specialized staffing to support our multilingual learners and intervention is a key approach that we will lean into as we look to supporting our students within the School Day in their, in their A to G courses. Next slide, please. Course expansion, access, and partnership is an additional area of focus for this particular grant. Given our need to focus in English Language Arts and Social Science, we will provide support with curricular resources to Social Science and English Language Arts to better support our students with literacy. Next slide, please. Advanced Placement. After receiving feedback from our students enrolled in advanced placement and those rising into advanced placement, over the pandemic time, virtual learning tools and platforms has provided additional support noted by our students and our staff. And we will continue to provide this and see if there are ways that we can increase access. Furthermore, as we continue to experience a decline in enrollment, having these resources available for students to continue to have the opportunities to engage in advanced placement, advanced placement courses will allow us to position students to continue to be competitive as they apply to colleges. Next slide, please. A to G Completion of C or higher. Currently, we support credit recovery and are able to help students recover their learning in those particular courses. One area that we can increase support is for students in grade improvement. Right now, students in grade recovery can recover their Fs and their no credits. By adding grade improvement during the school year and during the summer, we will allow students to be able to, to recover their Ds in order to be able to meet the A to G completion requirements. Additionally, we have multiple high schools that are, that are currently using what is called mastery learning opportunities. We want to recover learning as early as possible before students complete the course. So you can see in a couple of math courses across our district that students who do not pass the first semester are able to engage after school in what we call mastery learning. Because we are starting to standardize our priority standards and our proficiency skills, students can recover their learning and recover their grade earlier before moving on to the next level of math or the next course. We'll continue to use this and increase this as a model for, for students at the high school level. And lastly, the Summer College Readiness Academy, in response to the ongoing feedback around the transition to high school and the need to support students in math, which we feel is a, can be a gateway to their success in high school, will be reinstituted this summer for all of our comprehensive sites. Students will have the opportunity to engage in the prerequisite skills with a teacher from their campus, as well as receive college and career planning from a counselor on campus. And our parents engage in, in events throughout this time to learn more about their child, their child's new school, and the transition to high school. Next slide, please. As we implement these funds, we'll continue to monitor the progress similar with, to the baseline data that you saw earlier this evening in three areas that are required by the state. The first area is a percentage of students meeting the A to G requirements upon graduation overall and by subgroup. The percentage of students that are on track to meet A to G requirements as well as continuing to look at the particular courses that they are struggling to meet those requirements. And the percentage of grades that were earned as a DF and no credit in the three semesters articulated earlier, that students experienced during the pandemic or the height of the pandemic. Next slide, please. I look forward to reporting out on our impact over the course of implementing these funds to better support our students in their A to G completion rates, and particularly our unduplicated students who we've noted throughout this evening are an area that we need to continue to target and focus in order to support them. Next slide, please. Thank you for letting me share our plan for A to G completion, and I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Director Ready. Before we go to questions, Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment?
We do. Norma Ortiz, go ahead, please.
Thank you for the presentation. However, I would like more information related to the course expansion, access, and partnerships with the allocation of the 218,961. How's that gonna be like laid out in terms of, of the future expansion of the grant? Also, something interesting that comes to mind with the aspect of recover learning, how is that gonna look like at the different levels of grade levels and, for example, those who are high impacted, who have, who need intervention supports and English language learners? Another thing that comes to mind in regards to the possibility of having at, at middle school sites and the offering of Spanish courses, perhaps AP, as a possible elective that could boost and foster that sense of belonging that was previously described, and perhaps with any possible future grants and any other funds and resources that might be available. That would be something I would like to see to support that aspect that you're describing about the multilingual learners. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ortiz. Mr. Michaels, do we have any additional public comment?
There's no further public comment on this item.
Thank you, sir. Board have any comment?
I had a question that was sort of prompted by the slides here. Probably something that we'll have to talk about at a future meeting. But we talked a little bit here about AP and, you know, students going and taking the test. And I was just kind of curious, how many of our students do go to take the test? And what would the cost be ultimately if we were to cover the test for all our students?
Talking about the AP tests?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. My mic wasn't more awkward.
Do not hear that. I don't think.
The question.
So I think the question was how many states take an advanced placement test? And what it would cost to cover the advanced placement piece was that? And so that's, we, I'm more, I don't have that information offhand tonight, but I'm more than willing to come back and provide that information with a more comprehensive report on our advanced placement program.
And I can add that the advanced placement tests cost about $100 per test, and we had quite a few students at each of the high schools who took it. We can give you an exact number at a future board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move to J3C, Introduction to Core and Supplemental Instructional Material Adoptions for High School. The NVUSD Curriculum Council recommends the adoption of the following core instructional materials for mathematics, Explorations in Data Science for a new course, P Data Science. The aforementioned core instructional materials support students with learning the California Mathematics Content Standards for Statistics and Probability, Number and Quantity, and Mathematical Practices, as well as AP Computer Science Principles. Additionally, the core resources provide responsive and engaging pedagogy in alignment with NVUSD Strategic Plan Goal Number One. The NVUSD Curriculum Council recommends the adoption of the following supplemental instructional materials for P Student Leadership, Failing Forward, Turning Mistakes into Stepping Stones for Success for Student Leadership, and Deep Kindness, A Revolutionary Guide for the Way We Think, Talk, and Act in Kindness for Student Leadership. The supplemental instructional materials support students with learning the content, excuse me, standards outlined by the California Association of Directors of Activities, specifically Public Speaking, Conflict Resolution, Group Dynamics, Goal Setting, and Self Esteem Self Awareness. Additionally, the supplemental resources support students with acquisition of career and college readiness skills in alignment with NVUSD Strategic Plan Goal Number One. Dr. Masetti?
President Tinkwitz, before we move on, we need to extend the meeting.
Yeah.
Yes.
I moved that we extend to 1:30.
Second.
First, first by Trustee Dooley. We'll talk about that later. Second by Trustee Gracia. All tentatively in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. This is not, this will be an action item next board meeting. So this is just an introduction of the material and that it was recommended by the Curriculum Council.
So I just have a brief comment. I wanted to recognize that the way that these materials were brought forward and the forms that were used are a big step forward from what we had been receiving in the past, and I wanted to recognize the improvement made.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Gracia. Okay, we are going to, before we move to action items, we are going to take a quick two-second break. Again, thank you for your patience, and we will see you shortly. We again, thank you for your patience. We are moving on to K, which is action items. We'll start with general services. K1A Adoption of California School Boards Association, CSBA Recommended September 2021 Policy Updates.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Dooley. Do we have any public comment on this item?
There's no public comment for this item.
Student Board Member Bit.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. K1B Adoption of California School Boards Association, CSBA Recommended December 2021 Policy Updates.
To approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Dooley. Do we have any public comment on this item?
There's no public comment for this item.
Board Member Bit.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. K1C Adoption of Board Policy 514.5 Mental Health.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Dooley. Do we have any public comment on this item?
There's no public comment for this item.
Board Member Bit.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. K1D Adoption of Revised Napa Valley Unified School District Governance Handbook.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Dooley. Do we have any public comment?
There's no public comment for this item.
Student Board Member Bit.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. This is a resolution. K1E Discussion and Approval of Resolution Number 2225, Authorizing Continued Use of Remote Teleconferencing Provisions Pursuant to AB361 and Government Code Section 54953. We will be moving to the hybrid model on the March 17th board meeting. May I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have any pub, sorry, before roll call, do we have any public comment?
There's no public comment for this item.
Vera, may I have a roll call?
If I may, I have a quick comment.
Yes.
I just wanted to recognize the good progress that's being made toward allowing the public to return to the boardroom. And I look forward to welcoming people back to our meeting later this month.
Here, here.
They choose to attend in person while simultaneously maintaining remote access.
Thank you, trustee Gracia. I think we all feel the same. Again, there was a first by trustee Gracia. There was a second by trustee Dooley. Vera, may we please have a roll call vote?
Yes. Student Board Member Bit.
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz.
Aye.
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Ricer.
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez Maris.
Aye.
Trustee Shu.
Aye.
Trustee Dooley.
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on to Human Resources, K2A UCMR Said Teacher Preparation Program Agreement.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Dooley. Do we have any public comment?
There's no public comment for this item.
Student Board Member Bit.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. K2B Proposed NBA/NBUSD Collective Bargaining Agreement Effective July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Dooley. Do we have any public comment, Mr. Michaels?
Yes, we do. Our speaker is Gail Young. Go ahead, please.
Good evening, President Jankowitz, trustees, Dr. Masetti and staff. The issues that trying to read something and it's gone. The issues that COVID and ensuing pandemic have caused interrupted our timeline for negotiated negotiating our collectively bargained agreement between NVEA and NBUSD. But the safety of our students and staff came first. We spent hours navigating unknown territory. It was very important work. Because of this, we needed to extend our contract and instead of starting a new one in 2021, it will begin in 2022. We were finally able to finish our process and the contract was ratified by NVEA members on February 28th. I'm very excited about our new CBA. It has many good things for our members, one of which I've advocated for since I started in leadership roles in MBA. Thank you so much for all of the support you provide for the students of Napa Valley Unified School District and for the employees that work here. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Young. We already received a motion. Student Board Member Bit.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. K2C Resolution 2222 Elimination of Classified Positions.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Dooley. Do we have any public comment?
There's no public comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. This is a resolution. May I have a roll call vote, please, Vera?
Yes. Student Board Member Bit.
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz. Trustee Jankowicz.
Aye.
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Ricer.
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez Maris.
Aye.
Trustee Shu.
Aye.
Trustee Dooley.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vera. K2D Resolution 22-23 Human Resources Release of Temporary Temporary Certificated Employees.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Dooley. Again, a roll call vote, Vera.
Student Board Member Bit.
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz.
Aye.
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Ricer.
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez Maris.
Aye.
Trustee Shu.
Aye.
Trustee Dooley.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vera. K2E Resolution 22-24 Human Resources Non-Relection of Probationary Certificated Employees.
To approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Dooley. Vera, roll call vote, please.
Student Board Member Bit.
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz.
Aye.
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Ricer.
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez Maris.
Aye.
Trustee Shu.
Aye.
Trustee Dooley.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vera. Oh, I'm sorry. A public comment on K2E?
We do not have public comment for this item.
Thank you. We move on to Instructional Services, K3A Agreement Between Reiner Reiner
Reiner Honnakey.
Between Reiner Honnakey and NBUSD Napa Valley Adult Education for Career Technical Education, CTE Instruction of Small-Scale Forming Classes. May I get a motion?
So move.
Second.
First by trustee Water, second by trustee Gracia. Do we have any public comment on this item?
There's no public comment for this item.
Student Board Member Bit.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. K3B Memorandum of Understanding Between Global Online Pardon me.
Bless you.
Academy, pardon me, and Napa Valley Unified Excuse me, School District. I apologize.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Dooley. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not have public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Bit.
Aye.
Excuse me. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. I apologize, everyone. K3C Certification of Comprehensive School Safety Plans for All Napa Unified School Districts.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Dooley. Do we have any public comment?
We do not have public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Bit.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. K3D Harvest Middle School in Valley Oak School Operating as a Title I Schoolwide Program.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Dooley. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not have public comment on this item.
Mr. Michaels, Student Board Member Bit.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. K3E New High School Course of Study for Mathematics.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Dooley. Do we have any public comment?
We do not have public comment on this item.
Student Board Member Bit.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to Operational Services, K4A Facilities Maintenance and Operations Request to Call for Bids for the Portables Siding Skirts Trim Replacement and Repair Project.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Dooley. Do we have any public comment?
We do not have public comment on this item.
Student Board Member Bit.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. K4B Facilities Maintenance and Operations Request to Call for Bids for the Gutters and Downsouts Replacement and Repair Project.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Dooley. Do we have any public comment?
We do not have public comment for this item.
Sir, Student Board Member Bit.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to School Planning and Construction, K5A Request to Award Contract for Districtwide Fencing 3D Crusader Fence Company of Rancho Cordova.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Dooley. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not have public comment on this item.
Board Member Bit.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. K5B Request to Award Contract for Finishing Kitchens Modernization Project Pased for at Bella Elementary and Napa Valley Language Academy to Arts Builders of Petaluma.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Dooley. Do we have any public comment?
We do not have public comment for this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Bit.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion passes. K5C Request to Surplus Relocatable Classroom at Napa Valley Language Academy Campus.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Dooley. Do we have any public comment?
We do not have public comment for this item.
You, Student Board Member Bit.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. K5D Request to Award Lease Leaseback Services to Right Contracting.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Dooley. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not have public comment for this item.
Sir, Student Board Member Bit.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We now move on to the informational section of this evening. If you look through L1 through L1D, you can find minute notes for those.
President.
Do you have a comment?
Don't we have one more item? K5E.
Oh, did I miss it?
Yeah.
I apologize. K5E Request for Contract with FNG Drafting and Design Services for Inspector of Record Services for the Redwood Middle School and Napa High School Roofing and HVAC Project.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Dooley. Do we have any public comment?
We do not have public comment for this item.
Sir, Student Board Member Bit.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now we move on to informational. My apologies. We went through the committee meetings. As I said, meeting minutes are attached to the curriculum and student support committee meeting. The other meetings have not yet met. We will move on to L1E COVID-19 Public Health State Mandate and Guidelines for California TK and 12 Public Schools. Do we have any public comment on this item?
You, our first speaker is Al Grega. Go ahead, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
So I'm, I'm sitting here. It's 11:09. And this matter is so important to so many people. And we spoke clearly at the beginning of this meeting. I'd say four out of, you know, 100 people who signed a petition to get mask choice on an agenda, who also spoke very strongly about their feelings about what time this agenda item is always available to us, you know, spoke earlier about asking for a time of putting this agenda item at a more reasonable hour. You have students that have wished to speak. You have people who are elderly. You have parents. You have myself. I have four kids in my home right now. I had to put my son to sleep during this meeting so I could still remain on this meeting. It's ridiculous. It's ridiculous. I don't care if it's an informational item. You guys know you have people that want to speak on this and hear about it who don't understand the board process, who don't, who aren't familiar with what you all do. But we are the people and we do elect you, so include us. Bottom line. It's, 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 it's like, it's beyond irreprehensible. It's, it's like beyond not cool. It's clear discrimination because we're dissenting. Don't you know, like, about the 10th man, there should always be somebody with a dissenting opinion to give the opportunity to the group to give, to have a actual perception of, you know, equality, equanimity, inclusiveness, whatever you want to call it. Somebody has to dissent. Somebody has to give the opinion on the outside and you push that opinion, which you think is small because you don't want to hear it to the end of the night. So it can be small and in your minds, you can make it okay, I guess. I don't know. It's really disheartening. So we've asked for mass choice. 110, 120 people tonight have signed that petition. We want a resolution. We want to be included. Stop putting us aside to the end of the meeting. I don't care if it's informational. We don't want mask mandates. We don't want vaccine mandates. We want to be able to talk. We want to stop having our kids being discriminated against and ourselves. Please hear us.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Yes, next speaker is Sheri Debo. Go ahead, please.
Sheri, are you with us?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can hear you now, yes.
Okay. Um, yeah, as far as the mask choice, it is not the school's decision to put a medical device on our children. We have done this for far too long. 15 days to slow the spread has turned into a mockery of us as parents. Our children are in the least risk category and now they are the last ones to have this lifted. It is an absolute preposterous thing that you still have children who are not in danger in masks. This is terrible for their language skills. This is terrible for their psychological being able to relate to other humans. Everything about this is wrong and you know it. You all have children who learned to enunciate words correctly because they got to see a teacher without a mask on their face and they got to be free of a mask as well. This is absolutely ridiculous. Let's go back to real normal. Let's stop all this ridiculousness of a new normal because nothing about this is normal and you know it. They have already proven that the masks don't do anything. So end this mask ridiculousness. If there are children or high schoolers that still want to wear them, fine. But for the ones who don't, this should be a choice. This should not be your choice. We do not co-parent with the government. Okay? We pay taxes so that you guys have salaries. You get voted into positions so that you carry out our wishes. It is not your place to keep masking our children. And as far as the kids in the deaf community, this is such a joke. The fact that that has been ignored, the fact that mental health has been ignored, so many kids feeling isolated. They have problems already with their self-esteem, wearing hoodies, trying to cover up. Now the mask is just an extension of that. You know it's wrong. You need to end it. Give them back their freedoms. All of this is wrong. Stop acting like cowards. It's finally, we're going to get to be there in person on the 17th. So you'll actually have to look us in the eyes because this has been ridiculous that you've been able to hang up on us, cut our time slots down. Everything about this is wrong. None of our kids are in danger anymore. Take these stupid masks off now.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker?
Yes, the next speaker is Jacqueline. Go ahead, please.
Hi, I hope I'm speaking on the right item. I fell asleep and I just woke up and to hearing somebody upset talking, so I hope I'm speaking on the right item. And so this is regarding the COVID issues or and/or mental health. I am highly concerned about what I'm seeing and hearing. I've heard this week that we've had a principal put hands on a student at Vintage. I've heard that a student has been locked out of a school at, I mean, locked out of the office or locked in the office at Silverado Middle School. And but more concerning than that, my brother who's special needs at Vintage has had two physician's notes denied for a mask exemption because they didn't like the way it was worded. He's special needs. He has an IEP. And he's being denied his right, his federal right. Federal laws are being broken and it's so upsetting. He doesn't have a voice like we have. He doesn't have a voice like the normal kids have. He has sensory issues. He doesn't have a voice like we have. He doesn't have a voice like the normal kids have. He has sensory issues. And the school is denying his rights. I'm beyond upset about all the things I've heard. I'm beyond upset about our own children that are in school coming home upset with the mask on. Then lastly, I don't know, again, I don't know what, I don't know what we're on, because I fell asleep. But in regards to mental health and these COVID lockdowns, I'm in the healthcare profession. And I have seen more people in the last week, more students, more people under the age of 18. Our students come in with suicide attempts than I've seen COVID admissions into the hospital. Let that sink in for a minute. And not only has it been more students, it's been students under the age of 10, which kills me. And every year I've seen this number go down in the last three years, the age. So we're down to eight years old. Think about those eight-year-olds. They've never had a normal day at school. So one more, you think, what's one more week of wearing a mask? You know what one more week is? That might be another life. That might be two more lives. That might be three more lives of our students. Because while we haven't had any students die of COVID-19 in our district, we have had students die during this course of suicide. And that is near and dear to my heart and it should be to yours too. So one more week, that's lives.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. Michaels, do we have any additional public comment?
We do. Next speaker is Pam. Go ahead, please.
Well, I wasn't expecting to be so moved by Jackie's comment. That was horrible. This is going to be on you guys. One more week. One more week and it could be one more kid. I have heard of some horrible stories that have been going on. So, you know, I would like to maybe the Bring Change to Mind Club that's at Napa High. I guess it's at Vintage too. And maybe they should reach out to the students who've been leading these masks, the civil disobedience movement that's been going on there. Maybe they could reach out to them. Because this could be another really stressful week for some of these kids. I know a lot of them are taking mental health days because they're being segregated and discriminated by other students, staff and teachers. I've read some of the emails that the nasty teachers are sending back to these kids who are they're, they're doing their constitutional right as a citizen if they want to do that. And I would just like to, real quick, remind Robin and Elba that they're enjoying when they decided to do their, their mask choice. When they were at the bowling alley or they were up at the CIA, they should be giving that to the children too. God, I hope these kids are going to make it another week. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next comment, please.
Yes, next comment is George Blair. Go ahead, please.
Mr. Blair?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
Okay. When you hear phrases like "trust the science" or "the science is settled," that's not science. That's a cult. Real science is never settled, but real science is being censored. And if you are getting your science from any major media outlet today, you're being fed the cult of scientism. The giant pharmaceutical corporations have, in our day, established supremacy over our government, our mainstream media, the so-called fact-checker sites, and the supposedly prestigious medical journals and the regulatory agencies like the FDA and the CDC. Big Pharma has captured them all. There is a word for the form of government in which corporations have that kind of control. That word is fascism. The COVID injections have already killed three times as many human beings as all vaccines from the past 30 years combined. And this coming from a database that is known to be grossly under-recorded. The COVID injections do nothing to prevent transmission, but they do make a ton of money for Big Pharma and they need it. For the Big Pharma corporations are also notoriously criminal operations who've racked up billions in fines for killing and maiming people negligently. But now Big Pharma has bought off our government so that they have no liability for their products, medical fascism. Holocaust survivor Vera Sharab warns that we are on the cusp of setting up a medical apartheid state and all for a shot that stops nothing but risks much. And when coerced, completely destroys human liberty and civil rights. As we await the next imperial edict from California's hypocritical authority figure, I present to the board this quote from Dr. Stanley Milgram, quote, "Ordinary people, simply doing their jobs and without any particular hostility on their part, can become agents in a terrible destructive process." Moreover, even when the destructive effects of their work become patently clear and they are asked to carry out actions incompatible with fundamental standards of morality, relatively few people have the resources needed to resist authority. Coercively penetrating people's bodies with a medical experiment is immoral. I challenge the board to not be agents in a terrible destructive process, to not blindly follow immoral authority.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Yes, next speaker is Norma Ortiz. Go ahead, please.
Well, I disagree with the vaccine mandate for various reasons, especially at imposing them at a very young age. I believe on the body's own immune response. The side effects and adverse effects of the vaccines are many. In terms of the mask mandates, it is my understanding that they have been imposed due to valid safety concerns to avoid the spread of infection. Also, the vaccines have killed many individuals of different ages. I am, however, sensitive to what has been said on the topic of suicide. So that's, that's a valid point. It is also my understanding that other districts have stepped up in support of not imposing the the vaccine mandates. I can bring data in a future public comment opportunity to further elaborate on this comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ortiz. Mr. Michaels, do we have any additional public speakers?
There's further public comment at this time.
Thank you very much. Additional suggestions and comments from board members and superintendent? Future agenda items. Ladies and gentlemen, the last is adjournment. May I get a motion?
Move to adjourn.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Dooley. I don't believe we have any public comment on this item. Trustee Bit.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone.